Hello there.
Good evening.
Good evening, Patricia. I got a quick question for you. I want to make sure you're correct title. Are you officially council member?
I'm officially, I didn't know how to change it. I asked somebody at the city and they go, I don't know. So I've got to figure out how to do it.
I just don't want to refer to you as the wrong, wrong title.
Yeah, so, um, so you may know how to get that off of there. Give me some clues.
Yeah.
Nobody knows how to get my name. I have to take it to one of the IT guys, I guess, and have them clarify that. I meant to do that before tonight and for a little. I just realized it was still on there.
Yeah, if you, um, if you right click on your name.
Let me try that.
Okay.
Oh, I don't have the mouse. So how do I do if I don't have a mouse? I'm on my service, my city service.
Do you have a little pad where you can?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And then.
What do I do with the pad?
Well, you, it would be a right click if you had a mouse. The pad, I'm not sure.
Anybody know how to do it with the pad?
If you move your cursor into your box, there's a little blue box in the upper right hand corner, the three dots. And I think there may be an option in there.
It says mute my audio, stop choose virtual background, choose.
I have about a minute.
Rename. Oh, there's rename. Okay, good. Well, you guys are so good. Okay, what am I doing? I'm just taking out mayor here. And leaving it as.
Okay, it's five thirty. And welcome to the January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting of Yakima Health Board of Health. For the evening here, and I will call a meeting to order. And Ryan, if you would take roll call, I would please, uh, please do that.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Dr. Clary. Dr. Clary. All right, Commissioner McKinney.
Hi, good evening, President.
Commissioner Lindy.
Right here.
Commissioner, or, um, council member Byers.
Present, thank you.
Council member Deval.
Present.
Dr. Atterbury.
He's not on yet.
Okay. Okay, and Yakima Health District staff, Andre Fresco.
Here, good evening.
Myself, Ryan Iback, Chase Porter.
Present, good evening.
Melissa Sixberry.
Sure.
Lillian Bravo.
Here, good evening.
Sean McGee.
Here, good evening.
Dr. Bard.
Here.
Jocelyn Castillo.
Sure.
Victoria Reyes.
Here.
James Elliott.
Good evening.
And back to board members is Dr. Clary.
I believe he's joining now.
Okay. And do we have Dr. Atterbury?
Not yet.
Okay.
Thank you, Ryan. Before we proceed any further, we sure have a lot of things on tonight's agenda. So I just want to ensure that everybody gets the opportunity to make comment or ask questions about whatever the topic of that item might be. So let's proceed then. Review of submitted. Excuse me, introduction of guests or staff.
We have no additional staff.
So let's move to review of submitted public written comments.
Okay, we have twenty-three.
But I don't have those. So if you want to either forward them to me or.
Okay, I can just go and read them all.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we have twenty-three written comments, and so I will be reading all twenty-three of them. So the first one is from Tim Lovelace. I am sending this email for the support of bringing back the Health District, the fourth floor building department, for the purpose of making it a one stop shop for building permits and to hope we can speed up the process. Next one is from Clint Adamson. Please reinstate YHD physical presence on the courthouse fourth floor. Builders like me, our customers, and Yakima County taxpayers have been extremely challenged with the separation of YHD and the Yakima County Building Department. The back and forth across town is not only an issue, personal knowledge and understanding of other others' process and having a liaison at the county building department will alleviate many of the challenges that we have with the current system. Lee Holbrook. I just want to add support for having a permanent YHD president, the county planning department, to help Yakima County be competitive with other counties. This needs to happen. It is also a question of offering great customer service. I've heard quite a few complaints about residents having to go multiple places to get necessary permits to begin construction. Hope you are doing well. You're in a tough position during all this insanity. Next one is Kerry James. It would be very helpful in our course of business to reinstate YHD physical presence on the courthouse fourth floor. Please consider voting yes for the proposal. Next one is Bill Horton. I've been informed that Yakima County and the Yakima Health District are considering the return of the physical presence of the Yakima Health District employee to the fourth floor of the courthouse. I recall the previous physical presence on of a health district employee on the fourth floor. Frankly, it worked very well, and I've missed the presence since it ceased many years ago. This email has informed you that I am in favor of returning the Yakima Health District presence to the fourth floor of the courthouse. It is very convenient and necessary accessory service that is needed when applying for building permits and land use applications. Next one is Thomas Durant. I very much, I am very much in favor of having a health district presence representative available at the public services desk.
Poor bandwidth working at up in the county. I'm trying to, I'll try to figure out how to switch my name on it. Okay, thanks, bye.
Okay, Thomas Durant, I'm very much in favor of having the health district representative available at the public services desk in the county courthouse. Susan Finch, I would like the health board to reinstate YHD's presence on the courthouse fourth floor. Dana Savam-Savum, I would like the health district to read statewide these physical presence on the courthouse fourth floor. Tim Fleener, I would like the health district to reinstate YHD physical presence on the courthouse fourth floor. Chris Nass, regarding the subject, I strongly encourage the Yakima Health District County Board to reinstate a physical presence on the courthouse fourth floor. I'm in contact with dozens of builders daily. I hear most often regarding local government that the county has a two step process that causes delay in time and continuity. The lack of connectivity between permitting and the health district infuriates well intended builders and their customers. This disjointed process causes avoidable and costly delays in both time and money. Currently, the housing market is facing rapidly increasing housing costs. The county cannot mitigate many cost increases, but the county can fix this process. We must streamline the process by coupling various permitting steps into one operation at one location, the fourth floor of the courthouse. This issue is not just about business, it's about home, homes, providing shelter fulfills a basic need in our community. And the county government can help in this honorable endeavor. Our local vacancy rate is razor thin, and the number of available homes for the sale is at a historic lows. The resulting housing supply is tight and requires any relief that the county can realize. Please help builders save their customers both time and money by consolidating the permit process into a single stop at one location. This includes environmental health aspect. Next one is Deborah Morris. I'm requesting that this information that was put out by Senator Ron Johnson, a member of our US Senate, be given to the Yakima Board of Health at this week's meeting. This information is factual and pertinent. We must fully reopen and stop all mask and vaccine mandates. The full government response at this point should only be mass production of monoclonal antibodies and distribution. Make widely available all life saving treatments and rehire all fired unvaxxed. According to the CDC, fifty-nine million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven total cases in the US, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, zero hundred and seventy-seven total deaths in the US. Fifty-eight million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred Americans have survived COVID with an overall death rate of one point four percent and overall survival rate of ninety-eight point six percent. Six hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five total deaths for sixty-five years of age and older. Two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-two total deaths in ages zero to sixty-four because a death rate only point three five in those under age sixty-five. That is a survival rate of ninety-nine point six five in all people ages zero to sixty-four of age. Not taking out obesity related COVID deaths, which obesity is the highest risk factor for hospitalizations in now. Also for the head of CDC approximately sixty, seventy-five percent of COVID deaths reported over eight hundred thousand in the US were caused by other comorbidities and not the COVID virus. More people than that die of the flu every year. Robin Brown, I would like the health board to take reinstate YHD physical presence on the courthouse fourth floor. The process would be more streamlined. Ronald Pelson, I would like the health board to reinstate YHD's physical presence on the courthouse fourth floor with the number of projects that I have had held up over septic clearances. When the paperwork has been done for a month, a health district for months, a health district before submitting go building permit, getting the health district to find and link to case to give clearance is always a struggle. Jennifer Olmer. We would like to add our comments in support of proposed help board action to reinstate YHD physical presence on the courthouse fourth floor. We feel strongly that the representation of the YHD at the permit planning offices would help streamline the entire permitting process by returning to the practice YHD staff involved with well septic building permit aspects with a physical desk presence in the Yakima County. Public services downtown courthouse fourth floor confusion and frustration would be minimized. The experience running back and forth between the different offices causes unnecessary confusion. Each of these departments have specific requirements, and if not stated properly with specific terminology can mean a delay getting answers. There was a YHD rep on the floor, then the questions could be answered directly with face to face conversation with the planning and YHD, understanding the terminology that is that as a builder often use more casually. The YHD would also have a rep to answer the questions that come up with the fourth floor, come up when the fourth floor is working to issue the permit. Sincerely looking forward to one stop shop. Nairi Shannon, I, Nairi Shannon, support the decision to place a full time Yakima Health District staff on the fourth floor of the Yakima County Public Services to assist with well septic reviews. This would hopefully create quicker reviews and a more professional atmosphere. I have not had a very pleasurable time in the Yakima Health District main office. I refuse to go there. The front office staff have been unprofessional, unprofessional and unorganized. I would also appreciate the ability to pay by credit card over the phone. This has been a huge inconvenience for us. Doug Miller. I, Doug Miller, still structure America, support the decision to place a full time Yakima Health District staff member on the fourth floor, the Yakima County Public Services to assist with the well septic reviews. This will help with creating an streamlined process for permit approvals. Jeff Kearns, I, Jeff Kearns, support the decision to place a full time Yakima Health District staff on the fourth floor of Yakima County Public Services to assist with well septic reviews. This would help make the permit process run smoother. Chelsea Snodgrass. I'm sure your inbox is flooded with emails regarding the support of encouragement to have the health board reinstate a physical presence on the county's fourth floor. And mine is no different. Our builders are frustrated with the go back and forth in the disjointed process, which causes unavoidable or which causes avoidable and costly delays in both time and money. Please help builders save their customers both time and money by consolidating the permit process into a single stop at one location that includes environment and health aspects. The issue is not just about business, it's about homes, providing shelter fulfills a basic need in our community, and the county government can help in this honorable endeavor. Thank you for your time and consideration. Next one is, oh, my name is Christian Sanchez. I'm a junior at Topnash High School. I am writing to address masks, which are an issue affecting the people in our county. Masks are mandated, making it unconstitutional and a violation of a person's rights, and they do not work. MIT found the risk of being exposed to COVID is as great at sixty feet as is at six feet, even when wearing a mask. The University of Minnesota Center for Infectious Disease Research Policy Director Michael Osterholm said cloth and paper masks do not work to stop the spread of disease, which of course was admitted by Dr. Fauci when he said store bought masks too little to stop the spread. A two thousand and ten study by Cambridge University found some experimental evidence that masks should be able to reduce infectious under controlled conditions. However, there is little evidence of whether this translate to effectiveness in natural settings. Now I'd like to talk about the effects masks have on our children. When you cover the lower half of the face of both the teacher and the student, it reduces the ability to communicate. Children lose the experience of mimicking expressions, which is an essential tool of nonverbal communication, making both positive and negative emotions less recognizable. A study by Brown University found isolation and masks, face masks will create a generation of children with lower IQs and deficient social skills. Doctors found children developing during COVID lockdowns are showing deficient verbal and motor skills as well as reduced cognitive performances. Is this really what you want for your children? As a student, a brother, and then someone who works with the children, this mask mandate is a personal issue for me. Your children are forced to wear masks, which have been known to reduce intake of oxygen, which leads to carbon dioxide toxicity, affect the respiratory system and trap germs near the mouth and nose. If you want to believe masks are effective, then that's your right, but think about what happens when your children put their mask down on the table that someone sneezed on or coughed, or if they touch contaminated areas and touched their face. Those germs will only be trapped there for hours. A lot of your children are in sports right now and forced to wear masks. Does that really make sense to you? I know this little girl who has asthma, and she is often told to sit out of physical activities because of her condition, but she is told to wear a mask no matter what. What if you're, what if it was your child? Would you really want that? Some of the, some of you might have children who have asthma. Do you really want them to wear a mask that reduces their intake of oxygen? And does everyone really want their children to live with the long term effects of masks? I only ask you to do your research on masks and reach out to your board members to demand they remove the mask mandate from our schools. Thank you for your time. John Alba. I am not recommending the health board to read statewide physical presence on the courthouse fourth floor. Alexandria Rayford. I hope you are doing well. My name is Alexandria, and I'm a reporter with KMA TV. I saw the press release sent out in regards to the board of health meeting and wanted to pass the following questions along to the board of health to hopefully fully address tomorrow. What is the current positivity rate for COVID nineteen in Yakima County? How many people have been tested at each site in Yakima per day since the start of the year? Why has there been such an increase of people going to get tested for COVID nineteen? We've noticed a long line of people outside a testing site on South First Street in the last few days, along with the number of cars lined up at the state fair site on Monday afternoon. How many vaccinated people and unvaccinated people have tested positive for COVID nineteen? Was it, what is the board of health advising to the public at this time? What major concerns does a board of health have at this time regarding COVID nineteen in the community? Jared Jones. Good morning. I wanted to reach out and let you know that I would be absolutely in favor of getting the health district reintegrated with the Yakima County Public Services, so we could have a single source we are going to for all of our permitting needs. If at all possible, I'd like the health board to reinstate YHD physical presence on the courthouse fourth floor. And from Lisa Froyne. On behalf of Yakima County Public Services, I am writing to support the reinstatement of a full time Yakima Health District staff member to the Public Services Department on the courthouse fourth floor. Since the department departure of the YHD from public services, our customers have expressed frustration with the number of stops they must make in the time it takes to begin the billing process on their property. In the past, with the presence of the environmental staff member on the fourth floor, a customer applying for residential construction permit could seamlessly work with our offices to get questions answered in their application submitted. Today, they make an additional fifteen minute one way trip between our offices to submit separate. Today, they make an additional fifteen-minute one-way trip between our offices to submit separate requests. The Yakima Health District is integral in services we both provide the public. Public Service Services staff attempt as much as possible by finding existing septic clearances within our records. When we are not able to provide support, the customers get frustrated with having to travel to another office and start the separate process. Having Health District staff on-site adds to our seamless one-stop-shop approach for development within unincorporated Yakima County. This will also lead to a reduction in the time Health District staff take to review construction projects. Having a staff member nearby will allow public service staff to immediately provide answers instead of waiting for an email or phone call. These benefits were observed when YHD staff were previously located on the floor. Thank you for your consideration. We appreciate your partnership and look forward to the Board of Health's decision in this matter. And that's all twenty-three public comments.
Thank you, Ryan. The topic of the fourth floor and the Health District, that which Ryan read many comments on, that'll be discussed under new business item B. So we will move forward now with appointment of the Chair and Vice Chair of the Yakima Health District.
Commissioner Anderson, would we all be able to, at least if we choose to address the public comments? Briefly, I know we're respecting of time.
I thought that would be more appropriate under new business as you have requested.
Well, I'm talking, I'm absolutely the ones that you're referencing that are on the, I just was probably referring to the ones that were not related to the fourth floor, just so that we could.
All right.
So I, I, I think, just working backwards, I just wanted to thank Christian Sanchez, who I believe, I think it was a Topnash High School student who took the time to reach out and share his experiences. So I just wanted to say thank you, Christian, for, for doing that at your young age. That's actually pretty impressive. And I wanted to note that Chelsea Snodgrass is actually the director of Central Washington Home Workers Association. So I know that she was writing that on representing a group of people. But specifically, the, the information that was requested by Alexandra from KIMA, I'm, I'm just making note that a lot of the questions that she had, I believe, are answered by the situation report that comes out daily. So maybe staff can follow up with her, if you haven't already, and point her to that direction. But she, she did bring up the positivity rate, and I don't know that we have that on our sit rep. So maybe we can work on getting her that information. And quite frankly, I think it's probably information that we should all kind of keep, keep track of. But I just wanted to acknowledge those other comments that were not related to the fourth floor.
And Commissioner Anderson, I'd just like to recognize that Dr. Cleary has joined us for the meeting.
Oh, good.
As well as Dr. Attaberry, he's joining now.
All right, welcome both of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, may I speak for just a moment, please?
Yes.
As I also want to thank Christian Sanchez. I get very excited when we have young people who actually contribute to the conversation and take the time to do some homework. Wanted to thank Deborah Morris as well. I always appreciate if people take some time to look into things and express their opinions and concerns to the Board of Health. So thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to the appointment of Chair and Vice Chair, Ryan.
Okay, Jocelyn, can you put up the RCW on screen?
Ryan, I just want to let you know I'm here, it's Dr. Attaberry.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, according to RCW, seventy-point-zero-five-point-zero-four-zero, at the first meeting in the local Board of Health, the members shall elect a chair to serve for a period of one year. So this is the first meeting of the year, and so we'll need to elect a chair and a vice chair. And so at this time, just want to turn it back over to Commissioner Anderson and open it up for discussion.
Actually, Ryan, can I add one thing? Commissioner Anderson, my suggestion to this board is that you do bring on a chair at least until July. In fact, my recommendation would be your chair would serve that six-month period. And then essentially, what's going to happen as we will get into here in a little bit, on July first, you'll have a new board to one degree. So my recommendation is whoever you appoint as a chair, rather than serving the full year, would take that six-month period until your new board is formed in July. And then when that board meets, that board, under the new statute, will be required to elect their own chair at that time. So this is not for a year-long term. My recommendation would be just to cover you through July first.
Thank you for that clarification. So there's, there's a process. This is the time to, for nominations. If there's anyone who would like to nominate someone or themselves.
Commissioner Anderson, I would like to nominate a slate of candidates. I would like to nominate Commissioner Lindy to serve as Chair and Mayor Byers to serve as Vice Chair.
There's been a motion made, is there a second?
I'll second the nomination.
Any further discussion?
Are we allowed? Yes. Are we allowed to make further nominations?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. So do we do that now?
Yes.
Thank you. So I would nominate Commissioner Ron Anderson as Chair. And I don't know who is not as vice chair, but I would like to nominate Commissioner Anderson's Chair.
Just Dr. Cleary, I'll second that.
There's a, there's a motion and a second on that one. Any further nominations? Any further nominations? And this is for Chair. And there's been a motion for a slate of Chair and Vice Chair. Hearing no other nominations, is there a motion to close the nominations?
Commissioner Anderson, for clarification, I think you said this is nominations for Chair, it would be Vice Chair as well.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, Chair and Vice Chair, correct.
Then I would move to close nominations.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, that's two.
I, sorry, I was muted.
All right.
I don't think you need a motion to close nominations. You just need to repeat nominate the nomination or call for nomination three times.
All right. Is there any further nominations? Is there any further nominations? Is there any further nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. So what is the next step now then is to do a poll, I guess, on who, on the voting poll?
Okay, so we had two nominations for Chair, Commissioner Lindy and Commissioner Anderson. And so those two would not be able to vote. So the remaining five members would be able to vote, and so you'd need three, three votes, the majority vote. So I'll, I'll go down the list, and we'll take care of the Chair first, and then the Vice Chair after that. So go down the list and state your preference for Chair, either Commissioner Lindy or Commissioner Anderson. Dr. Cleary.
Commissioner Anderson.
Commissioner McKinney.
Commissioner Lindy.
Councilmember Byers.
Commissioner Anderson.
Councilmember Duval.
Commissioner Anderson.
And Dr. Attaberry.
Commissioner Lindy.
Okay, three votes for Commissioner Anderson, two votes for Commissioner Lindy.
Ryan, is it allowable for either one of us to vote for the other?
James.
Prime, were you saying you didn't want to vote for yourself, you want to vote for Ladon?
I'm just asking the question.
Well, I think, I think Ryan identified it earlier that you're out of the vote.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, it's a, it's a tie, so.
No, no, it's three votes for Commissioner Anderson, two votes for.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was three and three.
You won, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
If you wanted.
And then I, I believe I only heard one nomination for Vice Chair, and that was Councilmember Byers. Is that correct?
That's my, that's my understanding.
Okay, okay, so, so if you are.
I, I believe you might need to call for nomination for.
Yes. You're right on target there. Is there any nominations for Vice Chair? Is there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Commissioner Lindy for Vice Chair.
Commissioner Lindy has been nominated. Is there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
If that needs a second, this is Dr. Cleary, I'll second that nomination.
You'll have to, I'm just going to tell you that once, from time to time, I might just all of a sudden cough. I'm getting over a horrible three-week cold. So is there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
Are you including Commissioner McKinney's identification of Councilwoman Byers? Because I think she did identify her earlier, so.
I'm sorry, yes, yes, I was. So the two nominees are Commissioner Patricia Byers and who is the other? Commissioner Lindy. Those are the two nominees. Are there any other nominees? Are there any other nominees? Are there any other nominees? Hearing none, we will take a poll.
Okay, Commissioner Lindy and Councilmember Byers will not be able to vote. So the remaining, the remaining board members will be able to vote, and you need three votes to become the Vice Chair. So please state either Commissioner Lindy or Councilmember Byers. Dr. Cleary.
Commissioner Lindy.
Commissioner, Commissioner McKinney.
Councilwoman Byers.
And Councilmember Duval.
Commissioner Lindy.
Dr. Attaberry.
Mayor Byers.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Our Byers.
Okay, so Mayor Byers, three votes, and Commissioner Lindy, two votes.
Let me just say thank you, I was surprised by the nomination, so thank you.
Welcome. All right. All right, well, looks like we have that taken care of. We will move on now to unfinished business. Yakima County's, who is that, Dr. Barb?
All right, so lots of things we were worried about last month at the last meeting have occurred, but there's not all, it's not all doom and gloom. So I'm just going to review a couple of facts regarding this Omicron update. There are certainly a lot more cases, many, many more cases, and I think Melissa said there were over two thousand positives today.
Case rate is over two thousand.
Or hundred thousand, you mean? Yeah, so that's very high, considering one time it was down in single digits. So the one big difference now is a lot of teachers and healthcare workers and other people that provide services are becoming ill. So it's really decreasing the amount of available workers for all these jobs that they do. And in particular, from a healthcare standpoint, the limitations, the doctors and nurses and wealth technicians that can do their job is slowing things down a lot at the hospital. The other thing that's a side effect of the whole thing, not necessarily Omicron, is a lot of healthcare workers are quitting because of the continued stress. So that increases the shortages even more. The one nice thing is that although there's many more people infected, many more people hospitalized, there are not many more people on ventilators. So that's, that's a, walks around with a theory that Omicron doesn't infect the lung as nearly seriously as Delta did. The emergency rooms, again, are very busy, lots of people being held in the hallways because of the evaluations for COVID, plus all the regular things that go on in any given day. And smaller hospitals in rural settings, such as our situation, the issues are more dire than in a city that has multiple hospitals that can share the stress. There's also, because of the staff shortages, the amount of beds available to hospitalized any patient have gone down. So the result of that is that the patient load is higher for the remaining nurses and doctors that are on duty. So the number of patients hospitalized at the current time, and I apologize, I think this is for the state, is one-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, and that's the greatest number in a year. What's been brought up by various people over time is that many of the patients who are admitted to the hospital have COVID incidentally. So say somebody with a fractured hip, everyone's tested as they come into hospital and as they go down for procedures. And although that means their level of care is not as serious as a person who's sick from COVID, it still ties up rooms, it ties up protective equipment, and does increase workload for nurses, but not as much as somebody that's in the hospital that's sick with COVID. This ranges, this type of situation ranges from about twenty to sixty-five percent with an average of about forty percent. So that's also a good sign, it just doesn't make it easier for the people that work in the hospital. Some of, some locations in the country, the surge hasn't been as bad as the Delta surge, and those areas usually correlate with the number of people that are vaccinated, suggesting that the vaccine is actually having the intended effect. It's to decrease serious illness, hospitalization, and critical care. There's more availability of the vaccine now. There's an EUA for five to eleven. There's approval for boosters from teenage years all the way up to adult years. And the uptake hasn't been as good as we'd like to see with the kids. But it's, it's different now because it's available, and that's, that's a good thing. There's also the ability to do home tests. While they can't be used for official positively or negative rates, people can use that information to decide how they want to conduct themselves, whether they want to go to a party or a meeting with a lot of people in the same room. They can choose not to based on that test. And the home tests are not bad, they're not perfect. And there is a strategy that I won't go into tonight, but anyone who's interested, I can write that strategy up for how to deal with the positive home test versus a PCR test. And they do become positive at different times, the PCR is much more sensitive. So if you're early on in your disease, the PCR could turn positive first. The home test may be negative, but if you're having symptoms, the recommendation is to repeat the home test a day or two later. And often, as the virus contents go up in the body, it takes more virus to register on the home test than it does on the PCR. So there's, there's a different interpretation of that. So that's pretty much the new news, and be happy to take any questions.
Dr. Barb, are you aware, I know it's an agenda item, we can address it there, but the, there are, as we know, other areas in the country who have made a concerted effort to differentiate the true impact of the, of the virus in their hospitalization cases by going through and actually reviewing what you just stated, the difference between COVID administrations or those who are hospitalized with COVID versus because of COVID. This is something, and maybe you're going to address it as an agenda item, but there are other hospitals who've been able to do this, and there's entire states, I believe New York has done this. So are you, are you planning to address it under the agenda item, what our plan is for Yakima? Or would you like to address that now?
Well, actually, I actually did say that. So in the local hospitals, I don't think we have the numbers. But in areas that have studied it, it's ranged from twenty percent, what I would say incidental positive test, up to sixty-five percent. So those are folks in the hospital for other reasons, but also have COVID. And as I intimated, the. And as I intimated, the stress on the healthcare system is not as great as if they were all COVID, but it's not equal to somebody coming in with another disease like a gallbladder and being COVID negative, because you still have to isolate the folks and you still have to wear PPE when you go in there. So, because you don't, as a healthcare worker, want to get infected, so.
I, I understand, I, I heard you on that. But what I didn't hear and what I'm looking for is how do we get the exact data for our hospital? And, and it does have a matter of importance for reporting. Because, I mean, to your point, you know, it's not all doom and gloom. And I, I, I think I've stressed, I, I really like for us to start talking about things that give people hope and optimism. And even our situation report isn't reflecting that. So if we're talking about the morale of our community, that we're, we're doing a good job protecting ourselves and each other against this virus, I think it would be important for us to know the difference, albeit acknowledged, once they're in the hospital, whether or not they're there for COVID or not, they do need to be treated differently because of the impact they could have on other people visiting the hospital duly noted. But as far as, as numbers that we're reporting to the community, I think it would make a big difference if we could say to the community, you know, these are the people who were hospitalized because of COVID versus the incidental discovery. And that, that in no way discounts that absolutely, once they're on the inside, it is what it is and, and all credit goes to the staff that are working with the realities of that. But the community should know the difference because it does have a difference in how we feel we're doing against this virus.
Commissioner McKinney, I have, I have additional things to add on that topic. I'm happy to wait till we cover that on the, or they're down on the agenda.
Great, thank you. I think you're Dr. Bard as well.
You're welcome.
I'd like to add also, since we've met, the CDC has taken a different stance in communication. I'm hoping to clarify that. The CDC continues to position fully vaccinated as having either two doses of the Moderna or Pfizer vaccines or one dose of Johnson and Johnson. They are communicating the concept of being up to date as including the booster. So I bring that up because we are seeing many, many breakthrough cases for people who have been vaccinated. But it's also been made clear that those who are also boosted have received additional vaccines are in a better position to either not become infected or to have a very mild case of, of the, of COVID-19. So I shared it with you because the communication is different now. The term up to date is being used and also the, the dire importance of receiving the booster shots. Because we do have many, many people ill in our community and Omicron does spread extremely easily and quickly.
To, to that point, Director Fresco, I will know that the week leading up to December 22nd, King County, our highest vaccine saturated county in the state of Washington and, and much of the nation of their cases that were positive, over 10,000 cases in seven days and 70% of those were among vaccinated, fully vaccinated people. So it, it, the breakthrough cases indeed are happening with Omicron, which is all the more reason that we have correct data and accurate data. So we can understand of those cases, who's actually needing to go to the hospital because they are experiencing those severe symptoms, which of course then we can identify who's more at risk and treat them effectively with monoclonal antibodies and the other treatments that I know we'll discuss later. But thank you for that.
Yes, and the, the only other thing I'd like to share is we are in a concerning circumstance because as Dr. Bard mentioned, we do have full hospitals. And we are grateful that more people aren't dying from this newest strain and certainly that we are in the middle of a huge outbreak. But nonetheless, that means that our hospitals are full. And as many of you are aware, we've just gone through terrible, terrible weather. I think we were very fortunate that we didn't have additional health concerns, major motor vehicle accidents or tragedies that would have, I think, sent people to hospitals that are already quite full. So again, we're, we're, we're moving towards very concerning times as we've shared during winter. Thank you.
Dr. Bard, maybe your input on this as it relates to staffing that you brought up and to Director Fresco's point about hospitals. There's capacity, but staffing of course is the main issue. There's also been reports of many states, including Rhode Island and Arizona, who are allowing COVID positive nursing staff to treat patients because they have such a shortage of staff due to laying off people who were not accepting the mandate to get vaccinated. So do you, do you think that potentially we could end up in our Yakima hospital system where we would eventually unfortunately see that same concession? That we're so low on staff that we're going to have COVID positive people taking care of folks because we, we don't have the staff due to laying off people who, who didn't get the vaccine themselves?
That's actually been discussed and I think the Department of Health is not ready to make that commitment yet, but it could be made if we go into a official crisis setting. So that has a distinct definition about how bad things are. And then more liberal use of employees or former, you know, people that are off work but not sick may occur. I think right now, I don't think we should move separate from where the state is. The other health officers in the state also are being cautious about doing that. But you know, it remains a possibility.
So is there talk that if doing that, would a crisis of that magnitude, which would include vaccinated people who are COVID positive, actively working in a hospital situation to treat people? Would that also indicate that there would be a rehiring of those people who were not vaccinated to come back and also help since they are trained and willing and able?
Well, that would be probably the most difficult type of person to bring back in the hospital because they would be susceptible to becoming infected when there is a mechanism to make their infectionless dangerous. So being unvaccinated and, and probably not previously infected, they would be at higher risk for developing serious disease. The, the difference between serious disease and vaccinated and unvaccinated people is quite significant. And if you go to the New York Times from two days ago, they show beautiful graphs about the, the difference between illness and unvaccinated people versus vaccinated people. The, the graphs are dramatically splayed.
So, so just so I understand you clearly, so we would not accept aid from unvaccinated, well-trained and capable, willing healthcare workers because in their knowing acknowledgement that they would like to help in this crisis situation, that we would not allow them to do that because they would be potentially putting themselves at greater risk?
I think that there's no official stand from the DOH about doing that. And I know it's been discussed and it may be continuing to be discussed. The one thing that might have us luck out is if we peak before the end of January and the caseload starts dropping. And then we haven't, we'll have enough staff because the hospitalization rate for people with serious illness will drop. So if that comes first, we won't have to worry too much.
Commissioner McKinney, Commissioner McKinney, when you say we, I assume you mean Yakima County. But again, the decision would be made by each clinical institution.
Yes, thank you, generally we, and we being because of course you nor I have that decision to make, but we being the people who would hope, who, who are going to be impacted by the decision. That's what I meant. So it would be certainly we as a community member saying to people who were fully capable, willing and able, high-trained and willing to accept the risk, which I dare say there are people who accept a risk just by nature of what you do, Dr. Bard. You know, being involved with people with all sorts of infectious diseases and bloodborne pathogens that every nursing staff on a daily basis knows are making a choice to potentially put themselves at risk and potentially take something home to their family. I have to believe those folks made that decision when they decided to go after that degree and showed up the first day of work. But that is, that is just my layperson understanding of what someone might have thought when they decided to become a nurse or doctor.
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation on this. And I think it's a topic that can be discussed further at another time. We do need to move on under new business. Thank you, Dr. Bard, for your report, by the way. We do need to move on to new business as the House Bill 1152 and Mr. Elliott.
So if you could turn the slide presentation to what would be page five in the packet. Keep going. Right there. All right, so the two documents that I have submitted to you in your board packets, hopefully you all had a chance to look at it. First is the new statute that will be in effect July 1st. The second is, starting on page eight, just the Washington State Board of Health, most recent version of their rulemaking that would relate to the process by which selection occurs. Those are the two documents we're going to be working through. Hopefully you all have had a chance to look through them. Let me just point out that the timing on this is getting tighter as we move along. Looking at July 1st is the effective date of when your new board of health needs to be in existence. We have to keep in mind that there's a couple of things that have to happen before that date. First and foremost is that the board of health must actively recruit individuals to fill the positions that are going to need to be filled. Previously, when we've done this, we've advertised for a period of 30 days. So keep that in mind in terms of our timeframe. Second is that the board of health will actually have to do an interview process in a panel format in order to select the individuals. So the reason why I want to start with that is paying attention to those two things. That's probably a 60-day window worth of time. If we need to be in compliance by, by July 1st, obviously you start doing the math, time is moving here fairly quickly. So the purpose in having this conversation here today is to discuss this issue with the board, to go through it. I know there's a lot of confusion out there. I have listened to people talk on this. Frankly, I think people are wrong on a lot of different levels. I think there are some mistakes that are being conveyed out here. So my hope was what I would do would be to walk you through where we are, where we need to go, and then walk you through the process of how we're supposed to get there. Through this process, I'm going to intend to basically cover the statute here first and then we'll move on to the rulemaking, which is still being worked on by DOH and I'll cover that second. But after I go through the statute, to the extent that you have any questions that you want to work through with me, let's do it then. But working through the statute first. The first and most important thing, our starting point is this board is currently comprised of seven members, as you all know, three county commissioners, two elected officials and two citizens, the two citizen representatives, both Dr. Clary and Dr. Atterbury being in the public health. We essentially need to keep that in mind as we look, look through the pieces that are here. The reason why your current board is set the way it is is by ordinance and resolution have been passed a couple of different times here now. But this board being set now establishes what our membership is. And that picks us up then on what I would say, taking a look at your screen, which is number five on the board. It would be the third sentence on here under subsection one. The sentence reads, "In addition to the membership of the district health board determined through resolution or ordinance." So in addition to the membership that is established through our prior resolutions or ordinances, which is the seven members that are set. So in addition to that, the district health board must also include members selected under A and E of this subsection. So the idea here first is that we are where we are with seven. In addition to our seven, we need to add more that are found under A and E. Before we work through A and E, I think the question becomes, well, how many need to be added? In order to find this, actually I'm going to have whoever's operating it, is it Jocelyn, Victoria, I'm not sure, who's running it? Can we go to page seven, please? And I want you to look at one more page. All right, subsection K that's on there, this identifies what your board needs now to look like. The number of members, this is subsection 1K, the number of members selected under A and E of this subsection must equal the number of city and county elected officials on the board of health. You currently have five electives, you have two non-electeds. So the concept here is that the individuals who must be added, unless you're going to add other elected officials, which if you want to do that, you can, but to the extent we already have five, there needs to be now three additional members who are added in order that there is an equal number of elected and non-elected.
Mr. Elliott, I'm so sorry, I just, I just want to interject and just say one thing that the guidance that you're providing right now is contrary to what the Washington State Association of Counties Legal Council has provided. So I just want, I just want to make sure I'm hearing you and that this is your interpretation, but I do, I just want to make sure that there are other legal interpretations out there, which I know that you, you know, there, there are so many different organizations right now, but I just want to make sure that that is clear, that what, this is your interpretation as advising to the health district. But.
My advice, my advice, Commissioner, is to this board of health, I represent the board of health. So I am, I am reading the statute as it is. I'm identifying the statute as it says, WASAC or WASALFO or anybody else can have whatever interpretation that they want.
So let's just, let's touch on real quick just, and then I want you to just, I won't say anything, let's have you present. But there are, so WASALFO being the Washington State Association of Prosecuting Attorneys.
No, no, WASALFO is.
Or this, sorry, the health officers. Then we also have the Washington State Association of Prosecuting Attorneys. And then we have the Washington State Association of Counties. So there's a lot of different agencies who are working because of various impacts of this legislation to determine what exactly this means and I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah. So I may, if I just made, WASALFO is the Washington State Association of Local Public Health Officials.
Correct, yeah.
So was the question to me, Commissioner, do other people have different interpretations of, other than what I'm saying?
I simply wanted to make note that you are presenting, as you say, what your interpret, interpretation is to advise the Yakima County Health District Health Board. And I simply want to make sure that anyone for public consumption knows that this is, that there, there are going to be other interpretations from various organizations and probably likely counties based off of the legal advice that they are being provided. Because this is, the, the legislation was very confusing and ambiguous and, and I'll just leave it at that. So I just want to make sure that for public consumption, it's not, that they're going to hear other interpretations of this from other counties, maybe inside, all over the state.
Well, I, people can come up with whatever opinion that they want. I'm just reading the statute as it's read. My obligation is to represent this board. I'm reading it in a way that's not going to get you sued, hopefully, that's my goal. So other people can read it however they want, they can do whatever they want. But my goal is to try and help this board stay out of more legal trouble. So I'm reading it this way. Subsection K identifies an equal number. If you'll scroll to the page before, which is actually page number six, this idea, looking at subsection F, scroll down a little bit longer, this section also identifies the fact that the district board can include city and county elected officials as long as the electives do not constitute a majority. So I'm not sure what the issue is with WASAC, but I mean, I think an equal majority issue shouldn't be necessarily a discussion. But nonetheless, my suggestion to this board in reading this is that there are three members that you need to add in order to get compliance. Essentially, you need to add now from the group that fits under sections A and E. So if you can scroll forward and we can talk about what individuals need to be added to this board, go up one page, I'm sorry, up to number five. So as we identified, in addition to the membership of the district health board determined through resolution, so in addition to the seven that you have, this board must also include the members through A and E. A is identifying the remaining members of board of the non-electeds and it gives three different categories of people who must be included here. Subsection AI identifies public health, healthcare facilities and providers. Subsection two that you'll see down below says consumers of public health. There is one third category that goes on in the next page that is number three called other community stakeholders. These are the three groups from which you must select board members in terms of filling the non-elected spots. As I identified earlier, you currently have two board members who both would fit into the healthcare provider section, which would be number one. Essentially, you cannot then add another individual from that subsection. You would be required to add one person from the consumer of public health. You would be required to add one person from the consumer of public health. And again, keep in mind you're adding three people to your board. One would be from the consumers of public health. The second one would be from the other community stakeholders. That would be two. And then the third category from which you must add a member comes, if you can scroll down a little bit, from subsection E. This is as it relates to a tribal representative. So essentially what you have is, in order to fill this board and get in compliance, you need to add these three different people who are going to be coming in. I'm going to talk about the process about how to do it in a second. But you have two that fit from subsection I. You need to add one coming from a consumer of public health, and we can talk generally about what that means, or we can go into specifics that you want. The second one is you need to add other community stakeholders. The third position that needs to be added, and this has also been misinterpreted by people under subsection E. It identifies that if there's a federally recognized Indian tribe holding a reservation, then it continues, "The Board of Health must include a tribal representative selected by the American Indian Health Commission." So I know there is also confusion from people and sadly at higher levels about what this means. The statute clearly states that it must include a tribal representative. My reading of the word a tribal representative is that's one tribal representative. And it must be selected by the American Indian Health Commission. We'll talk about that secondarily. So the concept here essentially is as your board currently sits with seven, the requirement to add the three or the three that are listed here and the communities, other community stakeholder, the consumer of public health, and a tribal representative. So before we get into some of these other pieces, and maybe Commissioner McKinney wants to address how other people are reading this law, we can do that now.
James, a question. Yeah. Public health, wouldn't that be anybody? I mean, that is in the community?
Yeah, exactly. In fact, I've read it that way. I think other people have interpreted that way. And in fact, even Department of Health and developing their rulemaking on this basically said that could be anybody. However, I did find it interesting that there was one thing, Commissioner, Dr. Atterbury, that was interesting. It lists just sort of this over generic idea. And it's, it's defined a little bit greater in the rules that we can look at in a minute, but basically that's exactly right. It's everybody. Although in the rules that we can take a look at, they've said people who have been affected by public health. Well, I don't, I don't know how that isn't everybody in everywhere at this point in time. So that'd be correct.
And then secondarily, you'd mentioned that the people could not be with a healthcare background. It would seem those to be the most appropriate people.
So, so the identification that's come down is that based on the breakdown of numbers, it's here in subsection C that we're looking at. If it says the number of board members are evenly divisible by three, and it gives this whole breakdown, basically the idea is you can't stack the deck from the three different subsections, Doctor. So the concept here is they want to have at least one from public health, healthcare facilities, one as a consumer of public health. And as we look at the rules here again, a little bit later and what the Department of Health has done with this, you'll see what they're trying to add in these different categories. And the third one, other community stakeholders. So essentially where you have, like we do right now, currently five electives, the idea is that you would need to get a tribal representative and four others from one of these three categories. You can, where you're trying to fill those four, have two people from one of the subsections and you know, to me, you and Dr. Cleary, who have the institutional knowledge of being on this board and have the medical expertise, it's a benefit to maintain you. And so obviously that certainly makes sense. So.
And then finally, the question that comes up, the native, Native American representative, it wouldn't by definition mean Yakima native, because there's multiple tribes that are in Yakima County.
Yeah, it's, it's actually been an interesting discussion. I listened to AH, AIHC talk about this recently in which they made a representation that for every tribe that exists, there must be a tribal representative placed on the Board of Health, which I frankly, I just think that's dead wrong. I mean, I, because, and there's a couple of reasons for that. I mean, frankly, and again, I'm letting this board know right now, this is how I interpret statutes, okay? I actually read them for what they say. And I'm reading this statute and it says, "It must include a tribal representative." I, I don't understand how a tribal representative can mean multiple. But nonetheless, I think if that were true, and that is something that AIHC has identified, if that were true, essentially what happens is two very difficult things. I think either what that means is, say for example, you had five tribes going on, you need to add five tribal members. Essentially what that means is you would then need to increase the number of electives that are placed on your board. That literally makes zero sense based on the intention of what the legislate, legislature was doing. Their intention was to try and get an equal balance between electives and non-electeds. So your first problem is if you truly pull a tribal representative from each and every single tribe, you got two potential problems. Your first problem is you add more electives, which makes zero sense under this concept. The second idea is you would eliminate people from one of your other subsections. Subsection one, two, or three, which are healthcare providers, consumers of public health, or other community stakeholders. I find that to be completely in contradiction to what the intention of the statute was. So some have also misinterpreted the statute to mean multiple representatives. And frankly, I, I don't think it fits any concept, and that is not going to be my legal advice to this board. My legal advice is to follow statute for what it says and follow the intention of what is designed.
I, this would be a great time for me to say that I certainly think that Mr. Elliott has provided exceptional advice. And so my assertion that there are different interpretations out there should not be misconstrued to make any kind of insinuation that Mr. Elliott is not correct. But merely to get to this, to drive to this, there have been many presentations that have been open to the public that have been provided by the Department of Health, working with, because they are charged with writing the code to follow the instructions given to them, provided by the legislature, by, by the new statute that passed. And so the American Indian Health Commission is just what, what I was kind of trying to dance around a little bit. It's just that there are people and organizations who have been named as being a part of health boards and, and the interpretation from this particular organization that has been now publicly presented is, is not necessarily making maybe the, the sense of what, what those who, who I think have acknowledged, who, who wrote the bill, it was not necessarily their intention because of the the reasons that Mr. Elliott just outlined. And so only just to say that there's just a lot going on here. And, and, and to just again, thank Mr. Elliott. He is doing a great job advising this board and certainly there, I'm not saying he's doing it wrong. I'm just merely saying that there's a lot of confusion even among the legislators who created this bill and who have openly said that it is not, the outcome was not what they intended and they are trying to figure out how that, that's it. It's a doozy. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Well,
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead, Mr. Elliott, but I wanted to hear some comments from other, other board members too.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I apologize.
Don't go, go ahead and say what you're going to say.
No, if some, if other people had comments, I absolutely welcome them or questions.
Yeah, if I,
I would like to say that, I'm sorry, Mr. Fresco, go ahead.
Oh, no, I have to, you know.
Thank you. So I followed this bill last year and read through it more than once, and it's a conundrum. You know, which oftentimes happens, you know, when things come out of legislature, there's, there's good intentions and sometimes there's fallout consequences. I think that's what we're seeing here. There's, you know, some confusion. So I think, I don't know if legislature is still looking at this in terms of making changes or not. But I'm going to thank Mr. Elliott for, you know, the, your excellent work and understanding. And I think that I would tend to agree that following specifically what it says in terms of, you know, their intent and the structure of the bill. That's all. Thank you.
I would just add that if we could get a Native American with a healthcare background, that would kill two birds with one stone. So I, somebody out of the IHS health sector could, could, could go under the category that we're looking for in terms of Native Americans, but also could have a healthcare background. I don't think that would be stacking the deck in favor of healthcare backgrounds. Instead, I think it would be at least sticking with the intent of the legislative action.
So Dr. Atterbury, there's one thing I would say to you, the concept about how the board members are recruited, selected and appointed is a process that I need to cover with this board because I think there's a lot to talk about there. But what I will tell you as it relates to your question on the tribe piece, the language says, "Selected by the American Indian Health Commission." So the way that this is going to go, and by the way, WASAC is wrong in their interpretation on something else, Commissioner, and that is they have stated that the Board of County Commissioners will actually approve the American Indian Health Commission selection. I frankly do not see that in the statute. I think that's incorrect. But the selection of the tribal representative will be made by the American Indian Health Commission. And essentially what will happen is this board should solicit from IH, AIHC, their selection to fit on this board. I'm sorry, Commissioner Lindy's got his hand up. I'll stop.
Yeah. Well, I, Mr. Elliott, yeah, I appreciate your analysis here. I don't think, to my knowledge, I don't think WASAC, WASAC has said that specifically, that they choose that Native American member. I mean, I sat in on a couple of conversations about that.
I, I didn't mean to say that, Commissioner. What I meant to say was WASAC has conveyed that the commissioners have the ability to approve the tribal member. And frankly, reading this statute as it is, I'll take you to subsection B that's on here.
Yeah.
The board
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, Mr. Elliott. I, I, no, I, I, I think it's, no, it's, we have to accept their person.
Yeah, and it, it's a, and it's a complicated process between the Board of Health and the County Commissioners. I know it's one that you have questioned and tried to understand how it works. And I want to be able to present that board, this board with that explanation if I can as well.
Sure. I, you know, as, as I look at your explanation here, I mean, the good news about this and that your explanation is that it actually, I mean, if we are to add someone under, you know, the subsection two, or the, yeah, two and, and three, you know, consumers of public health, the other stakeholder and representative from the AIHC, that actually very neatly falls into making this work and keep it compatible versus with elected versus non-elected. And the one thing I wonder about is that when it says in subsection A there on page five, when it says the remaining board members must be persons who are not elected officials, you know, does that, or does that not include the health board as currently constituted?
So what I would say is your, your board as it is right now, again, I, I'm trying to square these sentences as they're written. Based on your current resolution or ordinance, the language says, "In addition to your membership, you must also add." So using that phrase, you need to add to what you currently have. However, the concept of the balance between elected and non-elected, if you're looking between sections A and E, section A includes the medical, sort of the medical group, you know, the, the language, public health, healthcare facilities and providers. So I would say that you've already put, I mean, this board's out in front of other boards in that it already has a couple of non-electeds on the board. So that's a good thing. It makes it easier to transition. It also makes it easier to, to continue your institutional knowledge that you have as seven board members who have battled together through the last year while not always in agreement on things. You, you all are trying to work through this process, and I think you can maintain that. And both Dr. Atterbury and Dr. Cleary can meet two of the separate subsections in order to continue. So this board wouldn't be in violation of the statute if you maintain those two. Now, the thing to keep in mind is their terms, obviously, they're going to be staggered to one degree potentially. Right now, they, Dr. Cleary, if I remember right, came on at least one year in advance of Dr. Atterbury. I may be incorrect in that, and I apologize, Dr. Cleary, but you do have a bit of stagger there, which is helpful. But they can be maintained, and I, and I think they should for the purposes Dr. Atterbury identified earlier.
Uh, Dr. Atterbury, I'd like to add a further distinction, if I may. You had mentioned a Native American representative, but the American Indian Health Commission is, is firm in their stance that it is a tribal representative. That may seem like semantics, but it's not just a person who's Native American descent. It's actually a tribal representative, which is a unique circumstance, but again, they represent a tribe. So that's not just a person who is of Native American descent. The second is you did mention the question of being a consumer of public health, and you can argue that any person who, who is in this community is a consumer of public health. But again, this is one of those areas of inconsistency in the language because they, they are requiring or, or strongly encouraging someone with lived experience from certain programs, which are for traditionally marginalized individuals. But that is again, a distinction that's going to have to be clarified.
Commissioner, or excuse me, Director Fresco, if I could just add to that as well, that the, in order to be a tribal representative, you can only be considered one if your tribe has selected you, which is kind of the conundrum here, is that a tribal representative cannot be designated by someone or an organization outside of the tribe, such as the American Indian Health Commission. And, and that is, is what is, is again, just some confusion there because to certain tribes, you know, it would be no different than saying we're going to have someone from one country represent these other countries. You know, and that again, it is really a lot of things that we have to really thoughtfully and respectfully work through. And to Mr. Elliott's point, under a very short time period to make sure that the board is protected and we're, we're following the law to the best of our ability. So anyway, I just wanted to make that note because it, it is rather personal to each, each nation tribe.
The chairman of our
Another note on that line, if I may, is that if it says a tribal representative, has that been a person that's going to be considered and elected by the tribe? What, you know, is that going to complicate that issue?
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I was just saying, it might be a little bit I know about the Yakima Nation is that they, it doesn't have to be an elected. It could be an appointment.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to confuse things more. That, that was my question.
Sure. Yeah. And, and by the way, the definitions, council and buyers, identifying elected official includes those public office representing a city or county. So I mean, that's the definition that DOH has identified. So I don't, I don't think that would affect it. Again, I, I think the concept here is there needs to be a reach out to American Indian Health Commission, asking them who they select as the representative to be on this Board of Health. And I mean, that will need to be done. Commissioner Lindy?
Yeah, the complication with that is the American Indian Health Commission is recommending steps that are contrary to the current law that's just been passed. That's the problem we're facing.
And, and I think again, the best way for this board to, to handle this is to follow what the statute says. And if there is a challenge later on from AIHC, I will be happy to defend you because I can read this language and I think it says what it says. I think the intention is clear. I think the arguments that you need to now have a twenty person board in order to meet multiple tribes or remove these others really just flies in the face of what the intention was of the legislature. So I, again, my goal here is to read the statute, identify for you the way that I see it, recommend to you the way hopefully that we would implement it. To the extent that there are questions or disagreements, I'm open to that. But again, it's got to read it the way it's read. I mean, I don't, I don't know what else to say, but I, I don't want to spend all our time on the statute. I do want to cover the rulemaking piece of it. I know there is a lot here on the rulemaking piece, but if we can, can we scroll forward to page number eight, please?
James, could I, I just ask one other question. When you get to this, maybe you're going to get to this. But I'd be curious as to the, the timeline and the selection process, and when these new members are going to be appointed, as to whether they're going to sit on the board in July or wait till the first of the year, and how that's going to affect our normal process of having elections where we're only replacing people once every two years or so.
I, I love the question, Dr. I, I love the question, Dr. Cleary. I am gonna get into this piece of the recruitment, the selection, the approval. Um, but to answer the question related to time, which I think is really the key question here and, and the important one for this board to pay attention to. By your board meeting that happens in July, this new board needs to be formed. So as simple as that is, uh, as hard as that's gonna be to implement, that's the answer. So whenever there's a July board meeting that we have scheduled, that my suggestion probably is that month, we don't have a, uh, an additional meeting, but we have our regularly scheduled meeting at the end of July. But this board can decide to do something different if you want, but in that July meeting, your new board needs to be formed that complies with this, which is an equal number of electeds, non-electeds, covering the areas that I've identified. And in addition, as I said earlier, when you voted on the chair, you will need to vote, the board will need to vote to have a new chair at that meeting as well and vice chair. So July, July meeting it is, Dr. Cleary. Um, as far as the selection process, the appointment process, I wanna cover that briefly. I know there's a lot of questions on this too, and I'm happy to answer those. But the first thing I wanna point out for everybody on here. What you're looking at right now, page eight of your pocket, is the current version of the Board of Health rules as drafted. This process is key to understand with regard to one major thing. There is an identified line on here that says feedback is due by January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. If everyone sees that, it's in the second to last paragraph. These rules were drafted and sent out as a second informal draft and distributed on December twenty-third. The Department of Health is accepting feedback and it shows you where to send an email. And I have already sent my email with a suggestion related to some changes that I see need to make. But feedback is due by tomorrow. And I would encourage all of you as board members to read through these rules and see if you have any suggested changes. Because your timeframe to comment on this informal piece ends tomorrow. That is not the end of the story because the Department of Health is now gonna take the next five months to try and have these rules in effect by July first. And you may be thinking yourself, wow, July first for rules that we have to implement probably three months in advance of July first, right? You're exactly right. That's why we're having this conversation now. I am advising you based on these rules as they are currently written. There are other steps in the administrative process that'll have to take place in between now and the rules get completely finalized. But for now, there's an opportunity, if you have any feedback after reading through these rules, that you wanna submit that to the, um, to the identified email address on here, LBOH composition, you can do so.
Really, sorry, if I could just, I wanna restate that point just so that, you know, for public consumption, that what we're up against is that um, the state, uh, has acknowledged and already expressed that they will not have the final rules done until after we are supposed to comply. So I just, you know, to just drive that point home, we're supposed to comply with ongoing drafts, knowing that they've already stated that we will not have final rules until after the time we're legally required to enact the rule, to, to comply to the law. I just wanted to get that out there.
So what I wanna say is at the beginning of these, and, and I know there's a lot of other agenda items on here. And, and if you feel like I'm wasting your time on these rules, you can stop me. I, I wanna make certain a couple of points and I wanna a- answer Dr. Cleary's question about how this process goes. Really, these rules, if you spend time with them, really answer that question, how this goes. I will say, just in simple terms, here's the idea. The Board of Health is required to do the recruiting for these individuals. It's identified in section, which would be page eleven. Can you scroll to page eleven, please? At the very bottom, it's WAC two forty-six ninety oh two oh. It identifies recruitment. This identifies the process by which the Board of Health needs to go through the recruitment of these additional members that need to be added. Again, you're gonna be adding a tribal, uh, representative who is selected by A I H C. But you do have two other non-electeds that you need to go through the recruitment process on. This starts here on page eleven. It continues on to page, um, twelve. Goes on to the next page, if you can scroll forward onto twelve. I'm not gonna work through all of these pieces of this and bore everyone to sleep at this point. But I will say, we need to apply these rules as they're written in our recruitment process. Now, again, the rules aren't gonna be finalized to July. We can't sit around and wait for D O H to figure out what they're doing. So my suggestion is, this is the most recent version from which to work upon. I don't know how many more changes there will be. In between the first version of the informal draft and the second version, you see the red line changes that are listed here. So there have been some that have been made, not major ones, other than one or two areas that, uh, they hope to clear up some confusion. So I have confidence that if we begin to apply this recruitment process as laid out in these rules, I think we'll be on good footing. Um, I know there have been other boards in the state who have already tried to do these things and jumped out in front of these rules and they're gonna be in trouble. I'm telling you right now, they did it wrong and they're gonna have to deal with it. Uh, my suggestion is we take these rules as written from a recruitment standpoint and this board follows that. The second piece then, Dr. Cleary, that you asked about how this process goes, is followed up then in the section that's down below zero two five. You can scroll down a little bit. This is the selection process. And to figure out how this process goes, I'm gonna try and say this in simple terms. I know I'll probably screw it up. But again, the board will recruit and then the board actually selects the applicant to fill the position. Once the board selects the applicant for the position, then the County Commissioners must pursuant to statute on a two-thirds vote, approve the person selected by the Board of Health. In simple terms, that's how this, uh, is laid out. The process of selection is identified here, as I said, at the bottom of page twelve. It identifies for you, um, in section four, at the very bottom of twelve, the local Board of Health shall assess the following when considering applicants. It lays out your process of how you are supposed to do this. It then, please continue going down a little bit further, subsection five, a local board shall assess whether they identify with a historically underrepresented community when being considered as a non-elected member representing consumers of public health. Six is how the balance should be. Seven is, uh, in, in regards to, uh, portions of fiduciary obligations for people related to certain, uh, consumers of public health. And it lays out the process here. One of the things that I, and I messed up on, on one portion, can you scroll up, please, to the prior page, page twelve? I'm sorry, right there, perfect. If you look on this page, it's subsection six at the top, under what would be section oh two oh, all applicants for non-elected positions shall be interviewed in a panel format by the local Board of Health, subject to the following, asking the same question and et cetera. So again, I want you to see this because, one, we've got the obligation in a less than four-month window to recruit through the steps required under these rules. And then second, once you get your candidates, this Board of Health shall then interview them in a panel format. I remember when we went through this back in January, this took a longer period of time. So I'm basically telling you, I think you, both your recruiting and your informal pa- or your interviewing panel format, you gotta at least consider a two-month period of time it's gonna take in order to do that. For this board then to be able to get to the point where you select the people that you wanna, uh, put in the positions. And again, the concept then is that the Board of Health shall select the person to fit the category. They are considered to be a successful applicant. Well, what happens with the successful applicant then? Well, according to the rules, once the Board of Health has chosen their successful applicant, then the Board of County Commissioners will approve by a two-thirds vote, the person who has been selected. Now, the question then becomes, well, what happens if the Board of County Commissioners do not by two-thirds vote, uh, appoint the person? Well, the answer would be then that person would be rejected. And in a sense, the Board of Health would have to go back to step one. So again, your process is Board of Health recruits, Board of Health interviews, Board of Health selects the applicant. And then the County Commissioners must appoint and approve by a two-thirds vote. I know I pared a lot of stuff down as quickly as I could and I know I talk fast when I get excited. So if there are questions related to this overall process, let me know.
One question that comes up, James.
Oh, go ahead, doctor.
Uh, one question that comes up would be, I think it would be prudent at this point for our, uh, chairman, uh, Commissioner Anderson to, uh, write out to or, or solicit uh, from the Yakima Nation, uh, who, who they would select. And then see if that person would also be selected by the American Indian Board of Health. Uh, as, you know, that way you'd kill two birds with one stone that way. If there's a discrepancy between the two, then we have to resolve that issue as well. But I think that of the, of the other type of candidates, they'll probably be a little easier to find. The one that's gonna be the, the, the keystone is the, is the, uh, one that falls under the category, uh, Native American or American Indian. That, that one is gonna be the challenge. So I think it would be prudent for us at this point immediately in the next few days to draft a letter and, and solicit a list of candidates or a candidate from, uh, the Yakima Nation and see if that would also be agreeable to the A I B H.
Can I just comment on that? I appreciate Dr. Atterbury's, uh, suggestion and, and the proactivity would seem to be prudent. But I, having listened to the, the American Indian, um, Health Commission present, um, that would be bypassing the authority that they, that has been given to them, uh, through Department of Health. They are actually directed, if you read through here, that it is supposed to be according to their rules. And so going around them is not going to bode well. Although it might be faster, it's not gonna be the process that was outlined. I will also state that having heard them express their interpretation, um, they made no commitment to getting anything to anyone in the state by July. Uh, there was communicated an expectation that we hold those positions open until they could determine how they were going to resolve the issues that are surrounding interpretation. Uh, and also, I, I understand when you're referring just to the Yakima Nation, that, that, you know, that is based off of Mr. Elliott's uh, interpretation, but going back to the American Indian Health Commission, who has again, been commissioned to write their own codes of how they would like to see this happen. Their interpretation, uh, of it is based off of the verbiage uh, that appears in the code that provides representation to, uh, any, um, let's see here, let me just read it exactly. Um, anyone who has, uh, rights to usage, I'm not gonna get it exactly right without looking at it here and I have way too many pages. But, um, the, the crux of it being that it's not just, um, for instance, the Yakima Nation in Yakima County has, has land and, and reservation. But it, it is also being construed by this commission, the American Indian Health, um, Commission to include anyone who has treaty rights. So for example, um, the Columbia River Basin, there are fishing treaty rights with, uh, at least four, uh, different nation tribes. And, and that kinda gets again, to the point of it that, um, it, it's far more complex. Um, and, and I, I was just going to suggest that I agree with Mr. Elliott that we need to start sooner rather than later. I think that the least likely things to change are the recruitment. I think that our, our board has already had, um, a resolution that thankfully already complies. Uh, we have advertised for thirty days. We've, we've advertised in ways that are compliant with, with, uh, the way that it's been outlined here. Uh, and, and given that, that more than likely that, you know, again, we don't know that those given recruitment and advertising of positions being the least likely to change, that at least working on getting that out there and advertising these positions are going to be open and available and holding open the application period. That will then give more time for things to become more clear and give us time to work on what the panel interview process looks like. But at least if we start the advertising process and open, it does, there's nothing that says we can't hold it for more than thirty days. But the sooner we start, we can at least hit that thirty-day period. And that, that's just my, my recommendation.
Any other comments?
Well, Commissioner, if I may support what, uh, Commissioner McKinney is saying, um, however well-intended this was. Uh, and again, I can't go into the legal issues, James can reiterate that. But we basically have a, a new process for, for local boards that is dependent on a selection by a sovereign entity. So sovereign nation issues are very complex. And there are other, uh, boards of health that have had tribal representation and have those going filled. And so it is a, it is a complex issue that again, I will defer to, uh, Mr. Elliott on in terms of how we move forward. But, uh, that is yet to be determined at the state level.
So one of the things I wanted to add as well is, you know, Mr. Elliott, you're talking about a sixty-day, uh, window of time, which means May and June. But thinking about if we have even one position that is not given two out of three votes by commissioners, we could be back into a thirty-day window. And so I'm gonna suggest if we're considering time, that we start minimally in April.
And, and, um, Councilwoman Byers, I'm sorry, I'll probably continue to call you mayor at some point, so don't get mad at me for that. I, I, I agree with you. I, I wasn't identifying to back that sixty days from July. I was just saying, I know that the process of recruiting and interviewing and selecting is gonna take at least that. Which is the whole purpose of having this conversation now is to sort of let this board see what needs to be done, our tight timeframe, the challenges we're facing related to the rulemaking. Um, and, and frankly, just to get, get everybody moving, uh, I'm, I see Councilwoman DeVal has her hand up.
Um, my only question is, um, for the Native American that will be appointed to the board, will they also have to get, um, approved by the County Commissioners, the two-thirds vote?
No, that's not how the statute is written. Um, the, the two-thirds approval from the County Commissioners are just with relation to what's called section A. Section A were the three categories of people we had from the, uh, healthcare side, other communities, stakeholders and consumers of public health. The statute's written in a fashion that when A I H C identifies and selects their member, that person is on the board, period, end of story. And there's not anything the County Commissioners can do related to that. Doctor, I'm sorry. Other comments or questions? I, if I can, Commissioner Anderson, just one more quick point to cover here. And it goes back to where Dr. Atterbury was in his question related to the process. Can you scroll up, please, to page eleven? And we'll, we'll look at the very top of it and I actually wanna work, perfect, leave it right there. All right. So section two here, Dr. Atterbury identifies the process related to including a tribal representative selected by the American Indian Health Commission, according to the selection process prescribed by the Commission. As Commissioner McKinney said, it's not something we can bypass. It's they run their process, they select their person, that person gets added. And I will echo what Commissioner McKinney said, A I H C's comments essentially, if we don't have a person added by July first, we just need to wait till we get one added later. Our job is to invi- invite A I H C to identify who that representative is. I think if we do that, at least we put the ball in their court and no one can complain that we as a board have not tried to try and get that person added to our board to be in compliance. Um, one, one other thing I wanna point out, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lindy, put your hand up, sorry.
Well, I was only, I was only gonna say that it seems like, uh, it would be better to, to get this recruitment process going as soon as we can. We ought to, to timeline to get that started.
Now, now, one thing I will point out in that process then, and I'm glad we're on this page because subsection four is an important portion of this and it relates to the County Commissioners. So there is going to need to be a change to the size or composition of this board as we have described. We have identified where we're at, that we need to add. In order to do this, the board under subsection four of County Commissioners must follow these rules that are essentially laid out here by way of your resolution or ordinance. Obviously, county commissioners, I don't represent you, so the prosecutor's office can give you whatever advice they want to give you on these topics. But one thing I do want to point out, because there was a lot of confusion about the dynamic between the Board of Health and the county commissioners related to appointment and what all that means. Subsection E that is on here requires the county commissioners through your ordinance to identify, and this is the important part, the process for how a local Board of Health will refer successful applicants to the Board of County Commissioners for approval and appointment. I want to stop there for a second because, again, reading this statute as it is and the rules that are there, the Board of Health has the job to recruit, the Board of Health has the job to interview, the Board of Health has the job to select a quote-unquote, I'm going to use the phrase here, successful applicant. So for the two positions that you need to fill that are non-tribal representative, the board will select those two successful applicants. And then the county commissioners have to identify how the Board of Health will refer those successful applicants to the county commissioners for their approval and appointment. So whatever the ordinance is, it's drafted, resolution, it doesn't have to be, actually uses the language document used. The important part is that the county commissioners must include as part of that the process by how or how and by the Board of Health will refer a successful applicant to you for you to approve and appoint. And the rest of the statute requires the county commissioners would approve on a two-thirds vote. I know that's a lot. And my suggestion for this board is, if you haven't had a chance to read through these two stat or the statute and these rules, please do so. I think it's important enough that we have a follow-up i- in our January twenty-sixth meeting that after you've digested this, you've read through it, you have more questions, and unless you have now that you want to address, I'm sorry it took so long, but I really think this is a huge issue. And I don't want to see this board in non-compliance come July first and have more issues. So there you go.
Well, I'd I'd like to also reinforce what James said, that we are well-positioned because of the constitution of our current board. But also that uh James has really embraced this early. We've been extremely proactive in planning for this. This is not the type of process that you want to react to late in in uh in in the spring. So uh we will continue to uh support the board with information uh routinely through the next few months because it's that important. It's literally a week-by-week uh process at this point. Thank you.
Dr. Clary, you have a question on this?
Uh, just that um all of this is based upon the interpretation that uh we are going to maintain the current status of the board. And at least uh one county has um not interpreted uh this that way. And based upon uh your on page eleven, that number four uh has gone ahead and changed the composition of the board uh preemptively. And so I was wondering if any of the alternative interpretations of this document uh support that, or are we going to go ahead with uh the interpretation that we're going to maintain the board exactly as it is?
I'm not sure if that was designed as a question for me, Dr. Clary, or for others to answer.
Well, that was for you. I don't know the other interpretations of this.
Well, as you identified Spokane, I know is one county who decided to reduce their board from what it was. And they're going through their issues, they're going to go through on it, but um nonetheless, I I don't know what other interpretations are out there, but.
James, uh my question is this. Um, our health of just is it, our health uh is a district separate from the county operation. Well, a lot of the counties, especially the smaller ones, uh the health, their health board is a department of the county and not a standalone. So I, as I read these kinds of things here, it it uh kind of tells me that it's geared really mostly to these those counties that have that their uh their department, uh the health department is a department and not a standalone as we have. Uh, is that, am I interpreting any of that? Or are they confusing the language, or am I confusing the the interpretation?
So there's actually four different types of setups here for organizations. Um, ours, as we currently are constituted, are a district of a health district of one county. So there are other versions. I mean, there's where there's home rule charter. There's one set of rules for them, doesn't apply to us. Where there are multiple counties who are involved in a health district, there's another set of rules for them. For those counties that do not have a health district, but have a separate uh department setup, there's a fourth set of rules. So I have focused you here on what is uh RCW seventy forty-six oh three one. Our county has currently consisted, we are a health district of one county. That's how the we were created. That's the way we've always operated. So some of those other counties that may have different interpretations are based upon different rules. I have given you the rule that exists as we sit here today, which is a health district of one county, which is seventy forty-six oh three one.
Thank you.
I saw Dr. Clary had his hand up, maybe.
No, I lowered it. Thanks.
Oh, okay.
Any other comments or questions for uh James or on this subject?
I would just add uh Commissioner Anderson that um I do think, and I agree with uh Andre's comment that uh I think we should keep the current structure we have. We're seventy percent of the way home. All we need to do is pick two new members to add to that and then wait for whatever resolution comes from the American Indian member, and in which case uh then we'll be in compliance. So I think that restructuring the board or starting over anew is a terrible idea because we're seventy percent of the way done. It would be like, you know, starting over a building that's three-quarters of the way finished. Uh, just finish it. So that'd be my comment.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any further comments or questions? If not, we have lots of uh other items to cover tonight. Uh, Mr. Elliott, I do appreciate your uh in-depth on this and your knowledge and continued effort to uh inform us and protect us at the same time. It's it's a big job. So with that, uh, we will move on to item B. Uh, under uh new business, which is discussion regarding returning to the practice of the Yakima Health District uh to the fourth floor of the uh Yakima uh 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 public services. And Commissioner McKinney.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Uh, there were um the reason for bringing this agenda item up is because there were um, there has been a a very strong effort in our Public Services Department. Um, who who for for anyone who isn't familiar with it, that's where you go to get your building permits. It's it's uh road engineering, it's 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 the bricks and mortar. Uh, and um like, like many things with government, there are different departments within government uh that that might not necessarily to the public uh make sense, but sometimes there there are different departments. And even though you're just wanting to build a house, there's a lot of aspects that go into that to build the house. You have to go through planning and making sure that you meet setbacks. You've got to make sure that you've got a well and septic that uh meet uh health um inspections, and you've got to build your road and grade it and make sure that you're you're, I mean, there's a whole aspect, and there are indeed different departments. But what we have been uh striving for at the county level for public services uh is is trying to increase um the the customer service aspect. And so the county uh had started to do surveys uh and proactive outreach to uh agencies and and people who consistently, you know, apply. So these are things like members of the Home Builders Association, uh the Akam Association of Realtors, uh folks who whose membership are 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 their the routine customers, the ones that we we see in here from the most, uh as well as the the one-off, uh you know, uh folks, a couple who wants to come in and make an improvement to a property or or, you know, something, build, build an outbuilding, something along those lines. And what was consistent in the results of these surveys uh is that there there is an increasing um amount of frustration uh among the people who use the services the most, that they are not able to 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 get the level of service that they feel they're getting when they're working with other counties. And a lot of folks are are having regular interaction with other counties. And a lot of them have also been doing business long enough to remember that there was a presence uh uh by health district staff for this purpose uh on the fourth floor in public services. And so uh, you know, this was a a public services and a community request to to bring this forward as a topic of conversation among the health board uh to see uh, you know, that there is um a strong sense in the community that uses um this service a lot. Uh, but there could be ways that we could improve our customer service. We being uh all of us, health district uh and inclusive of the county. And this is one thing that really was easily identifiable. Uh, we've seen the comments and they were read, uh but I welcome conversation uh from the board about uh potential for talking about uh potentially pursuing a direction to to look into this as it has been done before.
Comments? Questions?
I would just. I would just stand in support of this. Uh, these are the people literally building the pillars of our community. Anything we can do from a customer service standpoint to make their life a little easier. Interacting with county government is challenging at best. And uh, and so anything we can do to make that process easier. Uh, if it's not a burden on the health department to put somebody specifically in that role in that location, that seems like an easy public relations win and uh one that I could easily get behind and and support.
Commissioner Lindy?
Uh, yes, thank you. You know, and and as Commissioner McKinney mentioned, you know, we have been really trying to uh improve customer service. And that is, that's a priority for us. And if there are things that we can do to make it uh easier for our builders, I'm all for that. I uh you know, as I look at it, though, I mean, what they're, what they're looking for is saving of time and money, streamlining the process. And maybe, maybe the best way to do that is actually to have someone uh, you know, in person now on the fourth floor, but maybe there, I just kind of wonder if there are other alternatives as well. I mean, are things that this, you know, some of these things can be done by Zoom, or can they be done by, you know, adding, I mean, I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking. Uh, you know, we want to improve the customer service, but there may be more than one way to do it. I uh I was looking at something that uh Lisa Freund had put together, looking at past year. We had eight hundred and eleven permits that required the health district, uh you know, a health district review. And out of those eight hundred and eleven, seven hundred and twenty were building permits, forty-three were manufactured home permits, and forty-eight were fire construction permits. And I guess my only question is, are these things that would all require someone to be in person and accessible there? Uh, or is some of that stuff uh can be done with a phone call or have connecting someone via Zoom? I don't know the answer to that. I'm just asking the question. I I, in the end, I'm I'm looking for, you know, streamlining the process and and offering uh satisfaction to make our home builders and, you know, any kind of builders, you know, happier with the process.
Uh, Mr. Fresco, uh, would you like to comment on that?
Uh, certainly. Thank you for your time. I I certainly want to allow for other members of the board to comment. Uh, I would begin by saying that we have had a long working relationship with the county planning department and have always had a welcoming, open-door policy to discuss improvements. Uh, I can defer to Ryan and to Sean, our environmental health director. Ryan was, has has been environmental health director for many, or rather was an environmental health specialist for many years, was our environmental health director as well. And a registered sanitaryian. Uh, I would say that we have continually had discussions about uh improvement to our process. Uh, when I became the uh executive director here, there were many things that I felt that we could increase efficiency on, and so we can talk about those. We have far increased our ability to respond quickly to the needs of the community. We're always in a position of continuous quality improvement. We have invested in a shared, what is called a permit managing system, uh, the name of which is a SOWA. We have um committed a great deal of time and funding to create online opportunities that speed up efficiency. But I would like to share uh that from a process standpoint, we are now discussing as a board something that was never previously brought to our attention. Uh, the discussion of having somebody located at uh the county courthouse that's well over ten years ago, certainly before my time, that has not been brought to our attention. Uh, concerns about our process have not been brought to our attention. In fact, there has been no discussion with us about this process. So if there has been comments or thoughts or discussion points, this is the first that we're hearing about it. And further, uh, the um planning department has solicited comments from our clients, which concerns me as well. We, before we've had any chance to have that discussion. Uh, we've certainly had differences of opinion or and differences in process in the past. And it's begun by having conversations between departments under the county and our directors here. So I would share with you that this, I believe, is premature in making decisions because, one, it's not something that we normally do this way. I welcome comments and and thoughts, and we can certainly give you history. But the process is very concerning to me because this is something we were not aware of. And also frankly, the process of soliciting comments is really unprecedented.
Okay, uh, is uh, thank you. Uh, uh, Councilmember Byers.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. So uh I'm going to comment, um, first of all, on um Commissioner Lindy's uh suggestion that there may be a way um to uh hybrid or other means to to have this happen that maybe, I I know Mr. Porter has his hand up, and I'm sure he's going to talk about some of the costs of having full-time staffers in there. Um, so there's that consideration. There's the consideration, is it the best to have a person on the desk? A person immediately available by Zoom or phone call? You know, what is the best way? I don't think there's any clear answers on that right now, although I think this is a move in the right direction. And uh, Mr. Fresco, um, I uh am surprised to hear that, you know, that this uh uh, you know, happened so quickly, what, you know, that your full awareness, what the past history was and uh what might be best moving to the future. So um, I would like to make a motion. And that motion is to rec- to direct the Yakima Health District staff to discuss with the Yakima County Public Services the best means, uh, the most effective means to return um a desk or other presence of the Yakima Health District and the Yakima County Public Services. I mean, and the downtown courthouse.
I would, I would second uh Councilmember Byers' motion.
Moved and seconded. Uh, a- any further uh discussion or comment?
But I just have a, as Dr. Clary said, a a comment. Um, Commissioner Lindy identified there are eight hundred and eleven um permits um pursued, uh which would only be at a handful per workday. So I'm I'm curious whether we could get access to the uh those surveys, Commissioner McKinney, um, that were done prior to this to identify the problem. Perhaps there are other um items in those surveys uh that would identify some additional work i- if a person were actually placed uh on the fourth floor, because um it wouldn't seem to be cost-effective to have somebody uh just doing a handful of of licensing um or applications per day. Are those uh surveys available?
Yes. So Dr. Clary, I would say that uh based off just hearing um Councilwoman Byers' motion that was seconded, that that would absolutely be a part of the conversation that public services would have openly uh with uh the health district to be able to do just that. I think to Director Fresco's point, I think that customer service is something that every one is is really trying to increase, and absolutely. Um, and I I would also say, Director Fresco, that I I I I too am surprised to hear you said that you haven't heard of it. Um, you know, I I don't want to get into mudslinging. That might have happened before I was ever on the commissioner's board, but um, but it was brought brought at least to me uh that there have been conversations many times over the years. Maybe maybe they haven't then been through formal channels. Um, and uh, but I concede that, you know, certainly, you know, the intent is not to catch you off guard or anyone else. Uh, but it is something that resoundingly uh came forth and and to Dr. Clary's question, there there are surveys, there are meeting notes uh that um the Director of Public Services will be able to fully share and disclose uh to staff and to this board, uh because it it's looking for efficiency. That that is the whole point. It's it's not to inconvenience and and to for Chase, Chase has a budget. We have a budget over at the county. Uh, everyone's trying to run a lean mean ship um and keep the best and brightest, aren't we all, in every aspect right now? Aren't we all in every aspect right now? So this, this really was brought forward by the community who uses the services. And so how do we react as organizations who are providing these services to do it in a way that is providing the highest level of customer service and we are being as efficient as possible in providing that service? And also, we're, we're making good use of taxpayer dollars that each of our organizations have to use with fiscal, fiduciary responsibility. Absolutely.
Mr. Porter?
Let me say also, if I may, that the intent of my motion was to start a discussion between the Yakima Health District and the public service, public service department in resolving this issue. And the issue is how does the, how the two entities work together most effectively, efficiently for customer service? But the second part of that is to take the burden off of those customers in terms of extra time and effort and finances and put it back on the effective use of services in the health district and, and the county.
That's how I understood your motion. So thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Porter?
I still as well.
Well, yes, thank you. And, and Councilwoman Byers hit it right on the head. I, I just wanted to talk about a lot of it, the funding, the staffing, the funding, and the auditing implications of, of this thing. Like everybody here, I do believe in continuous improvement. So I'd also like to paint the full picture. Our EH fees have, haven't changed. They've been relatively the same since 2009. So we've had the same EH schedule for well over 12 years. So we were actually thinking about, we were going to revisit that schedule, that EH fees to increase them in 2020. However, that, that plan went out the window. So I just wanted to point out that first, our EH, and then second, you know, staffing. Like everybody else, we are incredibly short staffed. We're looking for additional staff right now. So to support this, we would have to hire new staff, at least two to three additional new people. So that's possibly $100,000 for, you know, 811 licenses. That's $123. And if you look at inflation over the past 12 years, 3% for the past 10, from 2009 to 2019, possibly up to 10% for the past two years, right? I mean, we've all experienced inflation the past couple of years. So we could possibly be increasing fee, like licensing fees up from $100 to $200 per license. So we might be saving people time, but I really don't think this will be saving people money. So I wanted to point that out first. That is certainly a, a major aspect. And then last, obviously, staffing, funding, auditing purposes. We have a procedure internally that all staff tells our count daily. They're double counted with two other staff in the room when that's counted. And that's reconciled and deposited daily. Having an additional staff person off-site would really present a challenge with those kind of things. And then also working with public services as we would love to do. But it also brings up management and oversight. You know, who's making sure the person is arriving on time when they're taking lunches, all those kind of things. And if we're going to be taking up office space, that means ILAs and MOUs. So I just wanted to point those things out before you guys decide to make any more further decisions.
Appreciate that, sir. Mr. Ibach?
Yeah, I just want to mention that it's, it's very frustrating the way this went about. This was, like, like Andre said, that we, we had no knowledge of this. All of a sudden, it was an agenda item. All of a sudden, I'm getting emails from the public wondering, you know, about, about the fourth floor. Had no idea why this was not discussed with staff. Once I started getting emails from the community, I contacted Lisa because I found out that she's the one that sent out the email. And after a 10-minute conversation, we started the ball rolling already. We're already doing what Councilmember Byers has suggested. We're meeting Sean, who's the environmental health director, myself, Lisa, and the, the building official are already going to be meeting. We agree that we want to make sure that we're doing things in the most efficient, effective ways possible. And, and so we will be meeting to discuss ways to streamline the process so that it benefits everyone. But the fact that a, a simple conversation with us beforehand, we didn't have to go to this level at the, at the Board of Health. I, I hope in the future that there's more communication between public services and ourselves and the county and ourselves. And so that we can deal with any problems that there are and not have to bring it up to the Board of Health to discuss it like, like, like this. So that, that's just my input.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lindy, did, did you have your hand up?
No, I, I, I did not. It's a fair comment.
All right. Thank you. Sean McGee?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to add really quickly. We are always looking for ways to improve our efficiencies and our processes. It's taken a lot longer than we anticipated, but we are investing, you know, serious money in our permit management system to align with what Yakima County Public Services have done with Acela. Making the ability to apply and pay fees online remotely is happening. It is going to go live with the health district. The citizen access portal will be live. We had a, a pretty serious setback in the, the, the electronic filter being built in that health district fees and, and public services fees are, are separated appropriately. So through our, our point and pay system, because that's also shared. So that filter is being built by Acela now. And as soon as that is finished, it will go live and our citizen access portal will be available for public use. So folks that need a septic clearance and, and need to submit that application and payment to the health district can do so right there at, at the courthouse if needed. And we do staff our, our public health technician at our help desk. And we do have an environmental health specialist on office duty to provide more technical support to that person and take care of those septic clearances as they come in, you know, to, to, as those app, applications come in to see if that's a, a clearance that can be pushed through and signed off relatively quickly, relatively quickly compared to ones that need a, a more detailed review and possible site visit to the, the property. So just a little insight as to how our process works. And then how it's going, it will be streamlined by eliminating almost everybody's need to make a trip from the courthouse to the health district and possibly back to the courthouse again. So I just want that, to bring that to your attention. Also, Chase mentioned staffing. I have seven environmental health specialists on staff. One of them is dedicated as being on what we call office duty to provide technical support for our walk-in clients, people who call and, and send emails that go beyond what the job description of our public health technician manning our EH help desk is able to do. So that leaves me, on any given day, six staff to be out in the field conducting inspections, which we do far more, working many more programs than just land development or septic. We have drinking water. We have food. We inspect. I believe we're approaching 1,300 food establishments in the county now. So taking another field person away from my current staffing, if we're saving time by having a person at the, at the courthouse, we're going to lose time and our field staff's ability to respond and get out on-site to do inspections. Because we'll, we'll be down one less FTE every single day throughout the year. Just another, another perspective on, on that, on this topic.
Hold the question.
Oh, Commissioner Anderson, I'm so sorry if I may. I, I was hoping to recognize that Councilmember DeVall has had her hand up, if you don't mind.
Oh, I, I cannot see her, so I didn't, I didn't know that. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Councilmember Byers.
Yes, thank you. I, I haven't had a chance to speak. I, I just also wanted to say that I was kind of caught off guard on, on the process of how this agenda item was brought about. And let me be clear, I am, I am a supporter of making it easier to build homes here in Yakima County and, and simplifying the permits. And based on what I've heard so far, it's already happening. My, my only question is, the maker of the motion, Commissioner Amanda McKinney, did, did you ask the public works director to solicit public comments from the private companies?
Actually, I made the motion, most of all.
No, I'm talking about the, the email that, that was sent out by the public works department to private companies. In the written comment, you can see that they requested private companies to make public comments at this meeting today. I just, just wonder why, why the public works director didn't just share these concerns and, and these surveys with the health district before it was brought on as an agenda item.
Well, that would be a question that you could ask directly to, to the public service director if you wish. But I didn't, I made the request to have this agenda item appear for, as a topic of discussion. And it was something that I fully disclosed in meetings with Realtors on the Home Builders Association and to our farm workers, or excuse me, our, our Farm Bureau, that this continued to be something in my meetings at their request over months, that this is something that they had wanted. And I did, in fact, email Public Services Director Lisa Frune and let her know that this agenda was going to be on for today, which there's, any one of us can bring a request for an agenda item. And any one of us is able to let people know that there's going to be an agenda item. It's, it's a matter of public record. So, so if you have any other questions about that, that's a, a clear response.
Yeah, and I, I did talk to Lisa about that. And, and she said that there was an, an email sent to the industry under your direction, Commissioner McKinney. And then she said that she would send it to me, but she thought that we were already in the loop since you were on the board. And so she did apologize for not putting, keeping us in the loop.
I, I'm sure, again, no one wants to have you be, be off guard. But, but the fact remains that this is something that the industry has wanted to discuss. And there is nothing wrong with having the health board discuss something that, that someone, even an individual, wants to have discussed.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and a question has been called. Council Byer, would you please restate the, the motion?
Yes, I move to direct the Yakima Health staff to discuss with the Yakima County Public Services on the best means to move, to return the desk presence of a Yakima Health District to the public services in the downtown courthouse. So I would, I would like to amend the motion if I may. And I would like to, to eliminate the part that says, in the downtown courthouse, I would just like for them to, to, to work together in terms of how they can resolve this issue, making it the burden of the departments and not the customers to run back and forth with their time and effort. That's the intent of the motion.
Commissioner Lindy?
Yeah, and as I recall, the, the motion I seconded said by putting a desk presence or by other means.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, there, there wasn't just the desk presence. It was looking at options. That was, that was.
Thank you. The question has been called. Mr. Ryan, would you conduct a poll, please?
Yes. So if you agree with the motion by Councilmember Byers, please state yes. If not, state no. Dr. Clary?
No.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindy?
Yes.
Councilmember Byers?
Yes.
Councilmember DeVall?
No.
Dr. Atterbury?
He's no longer on the meetings.
Okay. And Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, so the vote is four in favor, two not in favor.
And I guess I might, just really quickly, if I could interject, I want to appreciate the fact that it sounds like some of these things are already taking place.
Yes.
I, I'd like to add more, Commissioner Anderson, if it's okay, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. And, and for clarification, Commissioner McKinney had mentioned, has this ever come up? And yes, in past years, I've been approached by commissioners and other members of the board asking whether that was something that we should entertain. I would share that when I first came here, we had a response time that was, in my estimation, slow. I think we had staff who were well-intentioned, but they weren't given the resources to respond more quickly. We worked with our unions, because again, we have, we have union members of our environmental health staff to allow us to move forward with a cross-training and to have people become very well-educated generalists so that we could surge to meet the needs of, of our community, which include clients in land development during the seasons when those are most busy. We've continually improved with our education and our opportunity to hire more staff. We have more staff entering phones, and we've also been committed to something that I think is very novel to this county, which is that we have a help desk. We have staff who are dedicated to allow people to come in as walkers. So I am very open, and I want to thank Commissioner Lindy for the, the privilege to explore what is best because we don't want to spend taxpayer dollars on someone who may not be as busy as we would intend them to be. So I'm committed to that. But I do want to share, and I do want to reinforce that a, a member of the county, of the county public services department requested public comments to this board, which I don't think is a fair or appropriate manner to begin discussions. I think that that positions the public to consider that there is a problem. It creates, I think, a diversion from what I think a traditional public comment is, which is the allowance for private citizens to share what they think. And also, the public works department shared themselves a public comment letter, which again, is unnecessary, I think, because we have an open door policy. Regardless of whether we agree or disagree with the request or the concerns being raised, we have always worked together and we have traditionally solved problems that then make it that easier to inform and support the public. So I continue to be supportive of a working relationship, but I would request that this problem not continue.
Thank you. If we can move on, we have several more items to, to cover if there's no more further comment on this one. Hearing none. Let's move on to item C, discussion of the Department of Health consideration to require COVID vaccination for children to attend school. Again, Ms. McKinney?
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. And you do sound like you're feeling better, and I'm happy to hear that. The, the department, the State Department of Health Board had a meeting yesterday. And, and their, their meeting the month prior, they determined that they were going to use the process of a technical advisory group or a tag group to begin the process with, with a specific request of whether or not to amend compulsory vaccines in the state of Washington for children to include the SARS-CoV-2 vaccine. This is the State Board of Health that the Washington State Association of Health Officers wrote previously. Director Fresco, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, and I had asked Victoria if she could pull up the letter at this time. Are we able to look at that?
Yes, you're, you are correct. Commissioner McKinney?
So if we're wanting to, if we're, it's, and I know you're working on it, it's, I'm sure you have thousands of PDF little windows.
I, I could, would you care for me to share at least the gist?
I can share the, while she's pulling it up, but I, I really wanted the board to be able to read it because I thought, and again, moving in, in respect of time here. The point being that this, that the State Board of Health decided to go forward with this process, which I believe Mr. Elliott also outlined to this board of what the process would need to be in order for the, the mandatory vaccines for children in the state to become compulsory inclusive of the SARS-CoV-2 vaccine. So here's, here's the letter, just to remind us all. And the, the crux of this letter from the Association of Public Health Officers was imploring the, the State Board of Health not to make compulsory vaccine so long as it was still under emergency youth authorization for children. And this is dated October 25th. The reason why that is important is because it was determined that they were going to discuss that agenda in their October meeting. And quite extraordinarily, the association was over a weekend able to draft and approve this letter to be sent to the State Board of Health in a timely fashion to, to be considered in that board's collective discussions regarding whether or not to formulate this tag group and move. to, to be considered in that Board's collective discussions regarding whether or not to formulate this tag group and move forward. So this is the letter that was sent, and the State Board of Health determined to pursue this process anyway. And I did listen to the entire State Board of Health meeting, and listened to the discussion and the public comments, which is a good example of how people pay attention, and they look at agendas, and I think there were about forty-five hundred people who logged on to listen in, and that's extraordinary. But what I am wanting discussion on, and really is, I think that this Board of Health should join other Boards of Health in signing a letter, our own letter if we wish, simply reaffirming the message of this letter, that we are reaffirming that the State Board of Health should not make compulsory a vaccine that is under emergency use authorization. And the reason why, I will tell you, I do think it's important for us to do that, is because another consideration at the Health Board meeting made yesterday for the State Board of Health was whether or not they should amend their own bylaws to prohibit them or any future State Boards of Health from making compulsory a vaccine for children that is under emergency use authorization. And among discussion, it was unanimous among the State Board of Health that they would not, they would not move forward with amending, so that they, they wanted, they made it clear, they wanted to retain the ability to make compulsory the SARS vaccine or any other vaccine for children, not just to attend school, I might add, that's daycare as well, even for a vaccine that has just emergency authorization use for children. And so I think we need to support our health officers in this state, and show that we are still, we are seeing that they've decided to move forward with this process, which is concerning. I could see moving forward with the process if the vaccines had received full approval. But considering that, that the vaccines still are under emergency use, it seems incredibly premature, and understandably, quite alarming that they would want to pursue this, considering the many health officers who signed off on this letter, really, really imploring them to just slow things down. So open for discussion, but, but that is the, that my suggestion, that we sign a letter letting them know that we, we still affirm what is written in this letter, and that we, we encourage them not to move forward with that tag group further, unless those vaccines receive full authorization for administration to children.
Comments?
I would, I would support that. I read the letter. I was also aware of the, part of the conversation in a good deal, the meeting, and a lot of the public testimony that took place with the State Board of Health. I think, you know, we have our health officers in the state saying, you know, we need to, to put a hold on this process until the vaccine is no longer under emergency status is a wise thing to do. Most rather vaccines, and I'm not a health official, so I can't say this, my understanding is that traditionally, most of the vaccines take eight to ten years to reach a point where they are, you know, considered no longer, you know, under emergency order or under, excuse me, not emergency order, but emergency status or research status of any kind. So I just think this is, you know, kind of a rush, a rush thing to do at this point. And so I would just support writing a letter that supports our health officers in the state, saying, you know, we need to kind of put the brakes on this a little bit.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr.?
With the mortality in this group being so small, school-aged children you're talking about, that that would be yet another reason to take pause and caution before mandating yet another vaccine for them. But not to say that there isn't a benefit in, in some populations, it's just that if you're talking about the entire population, the mortality in that group is quite small, and therefore, that seems an extraordinary step to be taking for the benefit that you're, you're trying to glean. I'm not certain whether they're trying to glean it for themselves, or if they're trying to glean it for the other workers at the school or teachers or whatnot, but whatever the case may be, I just think it's, it's a lot to ask of them, under an emergency use authorized vaccine.
Thank you, Doctor. Any other comments?
Commissioner Anderson, I would just simply add that I, I appreciate the stand of our public health officers through the state, and I support that stand.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Fresco?
Well, if, if I want to clarify, Commissioner McKinney, are you requesting that the Board authorize a letter? Or will you join other Boards, if I may?
No, I, I'm perfectly happy being independent Board, because I think we can, we can control how, how little or more that we want to expand on the stance, but simply that I hadn't make a, made a motion yet, I was just interested in listening to the discussion. I wanted to make sure everyone had the opportunity to, to, to enter in discussion, so I would note that there are a few members who haven't had the opportunity yet, so I'd love to defer to those other members to make comment, and then see where that takes us.
Sure, I, I would share, and I know Dr. Barg has a perspective to share as well. I would share if the Board chooses to write a letter, I understand that. My understanding originally was the concern was that the Governor might actually make a, an emergency decision that would not include the Board of Health going through their normal process. So I, you, I'm just sharing with you that my understanding was that the process going through the State Board of Health was a routine process for immunizations. I know you're making the distinction that they're going through a process for immunizations with something that is in emergency use authorization.
I am making that distinction.
And I, I, I don't, I can't speak to whether that is or isn't. I think what I understood, the determination, was that they were never going to prohibit that. But again, I understand the concern. Emergency use authorization is very different, certainly very different. And as I believe Councilmember Byers mentioned, usually vet this for many years, and you're certainly talking about immunization vaccines that have already been approved by the FDA and are standard. So I recognize that this is a very quick process in an evolving emergency.
You? Any further comments? Is there anyone else that hasn't made a comment or addressed any of this yet?
Commissioner Anderson, I think Dr. Barg had something to share.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, having attended that meeting, we were all wanting the same process always used to approve vaccines for kids to be applied, and not to go any faster than what that routine and time-tested mechanism would, would work. So, you know, I think we're, there's a lot of agreement going on here. It's good.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Dr. Barg.
Any other comments?
If, if no other Board members are wanting to speak, then I, I'm hearing this discussion, then I would make a motion that the Board Chair work with Dr. Barg, if he's willing, to write a letter simply affirming our belief as a Health Board for the Yakima County Health District that we wish the process to not continue until we have full use authorization and approval by the FDA of any COVID vaccine for children in Washington State.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Motion made by Commissioner McKinney and seconded by Councilmember Byers. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Iback, would you conduct a poll, please?
Okay, if you're in favor of the motion by Commissioner McKinney, please state yes. If not, state no. Dr. Clary?
He's not on the meeting.
Okay. Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindy?
Yes.
Councilmember Byers?
Yes.
Councilmember Duval?
Yes.
Dr. Atterbury?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson? Six in favor, zero.
So, Dr. Barg, I would be most willing to meet with you or discuss what the verbiage we want to put in that letter, and then maybe get it back to the Board Member for review, and, and Board of Directors for review, and then send it out.
That would be fine. I think we should involve the rest of the district as well, Andre and Ryan and Al.
Yes, yes, right, you're correct.
Yes, we can, we can certainly do that. I would, I would respectfully, though, clarify that this would be a letter coming from the Board of Health and you, Dr. Barg, but happy to.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Alrighty, well, that was good. Thank you. Let's move on to the next one. Where the heck are we here? Let's, discussion regarding the breakthrough rate of Omicron, and Commissioner McKinney?
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. For this one, I, I think Dr. Barg had really, you know, we had some good discussion already, and I know that Nathan indicated that he had some data that he wanted to present. So I think at this point, I would welcome Nathan to provide the information that he felt was relevant to this topic, and then if there's anything else that I, I or anyone else wanted to talk, I, I do have a couple of other things, but I would defer to Nathan to talk about what he felt, he had data that he wanted to present related to this topic.
Sorry, Commissioner McKinney, earlier when I said I had additional points, that was in reference to item number, or item eight around the hospitalizations. I believe when we're talking about the spread of Omicron, Melissa may have additional information.
Okay. Melissa, did you?
They said that I was going back to the agenda, saying, where is that? It didn't show on that first page.
All right, then if Melissa, if, if you have data that you would like to present on this topic, and then we can go from there.
Okay, so I think, I think you're referencing, Victoria, if you want to pull up what Commissioner McKinney had sent in, which was the King County's numbers. Thank you. Yes, so, Commissioner McKinney, I believe this is what you were referencing, that they're showing seventy percent of their cases were fully vaccinated?
Yeah, so we don't have, and I just, as a point of, we have, staff has done an incredible job creating and modifying the sit rep over two years' time, as we have discovered that there's new ways to try to wrap our brains around this. And so I just want to thank you, many who are not on this call, I know, for really trying to figure out the data, and I recognize also that there, there weren't always really good, there, there were times where the data we were seeking or hoping for, to Melissa's point, many times, were coming from different agencies, or they were going directly from the hospital to the state, but not necessarily to us. And, and so I just want to take this opportunity to say that it has been yeoman's work trying to get the data and try to have it be accurate, and, and we all have to recognize also that the different data points do not get, they don't come in at the same time. And for example, Melissa, you've made this point several times, you know, if we're, we're asking for, we, we know if someone's passed away, then we have to determine if it was because of COVID or with COVID, then we have, and then we can determine the age, and then we can determine whether or not they're vaccinated. Obviously, we're asking to, to collect a whole lot of information. So I just, I just want to say that. And so when, when I'm pointing to King County here, I'm gonna also give deference to the fact that they probably have a lot more resources than we do to come up with something like this. And I, so I, by bringing this up, I just want to definitely say that this is not to, to say that we should have this too, it would be great, but we don't have the resources. And what we do have are the resources of exceptional staff who, who at least put the same data in Excel spreadsheets, and, and keep it up to date and accurate, and I appreciate that very much. So I just want to get that out there. So, but King County nevertheless does have this handy-dandy, it's called a vaccine outcome. It is really great for being able to see, you know, the efficacy of the vaccine, but more importantly, and I want, I want to strive to the point, the vaccine has definitely proven to keep people who would likely, or more than likely than others, given age or comorbidities, have a significantly bad outcome, potentially hospitalization or passing away. But it also, for certain age groups, we can see, even if you're vaccinated, the, the ratios, it to, to Dr. Atterbury's point previously, there are still age groups and cohorts of people that just are not going to have those negative outcomes, vaccinated or not. But what this shows is that the vaccine is not as effective against Omicron, because of course, this is recent data, and we know that I believe ninety, what percent, Melissa, five percent? So around there of the COVID positives right now are considered to be Omicron? Is that, I think, the latest?
I think the latest is a hundred percent.
Okay, I, okay, well, I knew it was high, but I'm just saying that, I, I guess what I'm saying is we can be relatively confident that this is Omicron right here, okay? And to Dr. Barg's point, which what I've been really trying to hopefully guide towards is not doom and gloom, but the hope. So for those people who've chosen to get vaccinated, it, it's having a positive impact. For those people who are not vaccinated, we are still seeing our death rate decline, which means Omicron, to Dr. Barg's point, is, is not, thankfully, by the grace of God, as, 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 as bad for, for even those people who normally, with Alpha and Delta, or whatever previous variant, but those being the most typical, were experiencing. And I, and I, I, I hope that we can embrace the positives. Should we be cautiously optimistic? Yes. And should we behave as a society in a functioning way that we're acknowledging, which is happening all across the nation, that this is something we're going to have to live with, and we are living with it, which is the good news. And it's not to say that vaccines are not effective, because as we've seen, there is data that shows that for people who would typically, potentially, at least with previous variants, have landed in the hospital, otherwise, they, they are not. And our death rate continues to climb, and we can, we can delve into the data years from now, but I think it's something to celebrate. And I, I also want to make the point that when we discuss the perspective of mandating, and this speaks to our previous agenda item, when we talk about mandating something that, that clearly is, is it improving? Yeah, you're going to be able to say for certain cohorts of groups of people will be able to dissect that it was a benefit. But for those people who have decided that they don't want to vaccinate, because they either were one-shot, or they didn't want to go get the booster, or they had natural immunity, mandating something that doesn't have the efficacy that we hoped it would, we, we really did hope that it would have higher efficacy, but, but it doesn't. And I, I think it was just, we should really take a pause and allow people to make a decision, because they have looked at the data and determined what was best for themselves. And that is the purpose of looking at these, so that people can digest the information and make a decision that's best for them and their children.
Okay, so I'll address those in different areas. Start with the first one with, that it's not, that we don't have the graph. We don't have it looking like that, but it is in our sit rep daily, we do have the raw numbers along with the percentages, and then also in a bar graph, so that the, the information is there, broken down between vaccinated and unvaccinated. It's just not in the same format as King County's, but the data is there.
You can't use the hover button, that's pretty cool.
That's a, I think that's Microsoft BI or something, and we just don't have that fifty thousand dollar software. So it is in the sit rest for people who want to see it, it is in there. And then also, to address the hospitalizations, so when we, right now, we're looking at overwhelming healthcare system. When, even though there doesn't seem to be as severe, when you have, you know, five, six, ten times as many people infected all at once, you're going to have more hospitalizations, even though it's less severe. So we're seeing our hospitalizations go back up. We know that our healthcare system is overwhelmed. Governor Inslee put a stop to all non-urgent procedures today, and he also has ordered in the National Guard to help Memorial Hospital. So our healthcare system is still a, a big concern to all of us. The Red Cross has announced that there's a shortage of blood, so now we're looking at trauma patients who potentially could die, because we don't have enough blood, because of staffing shortages, because of so many people being infected all at once. So even though it's, this Omicron luckily is not as severe, it's having major impacts on the economy and, and, and everything, even besides just a person's individual health. So there's a lot of other things to factor in on that, and I wanted to show the, Victoria, sorry, if you can pull up. Victoria, sorry, if you can pull up the the slide that I had sent to you. So I had an epidemiologist pull, because I know for Seattle's data, it shows seventy percent of their vaccinated patient or seventy percent of their new cases were vaccinated. But again, I believe it's over ninety percent of their county has at least one dose of vaccine and eighty-six percent, I think, are fully vaccinated. So if you have a hundred percent of your county vaccinated, then a hundred percent of your new infections would be vaccinated. So we're not looking at those same type of rates here in Naxum County. We definitely don't have the the vaccine rates that that they do. So I had Dr. Varg, also our epidemiologist, pulled the data for me. Can you scroll down?
Jocelyn and Jocelyn and Victoria, do you mind enlarging the the image? Thank you. Appreciate you.
So what you're finding on this graph, this is rates per hundred thousand. So the green line shows you're unvaccinated. The blue line shows you're fully vaccinated. So for our county specifically, your rate is one thousand seven hundred forty-eight per hundred thousand for unvaccinated, one thousand seventy-one for fully vaccinated individuals. So there definitely is a difference. And this is over just from Jan, a twenty-eight days. She pulled this back for twenty-eight days. Well, that the the those numbers there are twenty for a twenty-eight day time period. She went all the way back to January of last year. I meant scroll down for me a little bit more. And then this here is your hospitalization rate. So if you are unvaccinated, your twenty-nine per hundred thousand is your rate for the unvaccinated and four per hundred thousand for fully vaccinated. So that's a, that's a huge, a huge difference. I think there was one more slide as well for deaths. Yep, here we have our deaths. So five per hundred thousand for unvaccinated and one per hundred thousand for fully vaccinated. So I just wanted to show that comparison, but you know, it's it's, that's why it's so important to look at the rates and not just the wrong number, because we're talking about different, we've got to compare the populations to the same population.
I do not dispute that they have over ninety percent vaccinated and yet seventy percent of them continue to get COVID. I do not dispute that fact. What I would also say, and this is another item we're going to talk about, is the difference, though, of being hospitalized and are you being hospitalized and counted as a COVID case because you tested positive because of protocol? Versus because you had symptoms that required you to seek hospital help and care because of COVID symptoms. And there is a difference. And so thank you for presenting that.
There's, yeah, Nathan will talk more about that. And I'll be able to add to it as well, but it goes back to what Dr. Barg said earlier, which is that whether they're admitted for COVID or not, they are still taking up hospital resources because of the time, the people, the personal protective equipment, the nurses that are going to need to care for them. But Nathan will dive into that a little bit more when he talks on that topic.
Excuse me, Commissioner and others, it is now ten after eight. We do have four other items that are on the agenda. So I would appreciate if we could move on to those others and get them covered if we possibly can. If we run out of time, can't get them all covered, then we can move them to the next agenda.
I don't have anything further unless someone else has commented.
I'm just wondering, Melissa, if you can, I I still can't see on the screen because I my screen is split on a tiny little surface. If you can forward those slides to me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
And we'll send those out to all Board of Members. Sorry, I just got those at home today and looking at a short turnaround, so.
But to reiterate, this information, which is what I wanted to make to Alexandria's question and the comments, is that this information is contained in the sit rep that is is distributed daily at the end of the day. So it it's always been there.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Let's move on to item E and Commissioner McKinney.
Yes, I think I had just one article that I'd forwarded. Maybe Victoria can pull that up, and that was sent to the board previously for review. So I'll give Victoria a chance to do that. Okay, so there are a plethora of articles, but this one was from the Wall Street Journal. And also coincidentally, I think on the same day, CDC Director Wolenski made testimony to the US Senate, I believe. It might have been a different committee. I'm not, I don't recall. I only read transcripts. But the point being that revisiting the masks and and one thing that seems to be circulating around news sources around the globe is that Omicron, and part of the reason why we're seeing cases increase and skyrocket, even vaccinated, fully vaccinated people, is the fact that the masks, cloth masks are inefficient. And the CDC has made note that now, you know, multiple masks, as long as one is surgical, and N ninety-five masks. I'm bringing this to everyone's attention because I think it's important as it relates, again, to our children. And we continue to have adults be able to go throughout their daily work lives without having to wear masks depending upon their different protocols. And yet our kiddos are, I think, it was Christian Sanchez, actually, who wrote in as a as a student, the negative impacts. And we are learning what parents were really begging for us to acknowledge within months of this pandemic, which is that covering these children's faces and their teachers' faces, the negative impacts them. It is now, I believe, the Association of Pediatrics, correct me if I'm Dr. Varg, has has considered and this a mental health crisis for our youth. And this is a contributing factor. And so, you know, it's not that we don't want to take precautions, but when you have something this ineffective, and it also has so many negative consequences, especially to our children, it really should be a decision that is up to the parents if they want to have their child wear a mask. I and and I just, I hope that you read it. I hope that you seek out information, which is plentiful, that shows that the regular cloth masks are just not cutting it. And I I also want to acknowledge that in many of these articles, there are places all across the nation and the globe that are calling this, you know, endemic. And we have to learn to live with it. And I would note that even CNN, which I occasionally watch, has come around to saying that this is something that we just are going to have to live with, like the cold and the flu. To the point, Melissa, that you just brought up earlier to Dr. Barg, there are very real ramifications in our hospital system. And that absolutely is something that we have to acknowledge. I believe we have the tools, and those are rehiring people who were willing and able and wishing to be a part of the solution, who were let go for their decision not to vaccinate. So thankfully, I do think that there's hope and light out there, and there was a way through this spike. I also think that thankfully, we can look to the global waves and and hopefully, we will also see the drop, the plummet in cases that we saw in other parts of the world that preceded us with the Omicron variant. So that's the only reason why I wanted to bring this up. I hope you research and look into the effectiveness, and hopefully, it will inform our decisions to repeal mask mandates in the future.
Thank you. Any any comments from anybody?
I'll just add, I'm sure Dr. Barg will agree with me, that the staffing shortages at the hospitals aren't necessary because they don't have enough staff. It's because of the amount of people they have out sick due to exposure and being sick with COVID.
And that's correct. Right now, there's over a hundred healthcare providers who are who have COVID, basically, and are isolating based on the DOH and CDC guidelines for healthcare workers.
And so in order for them to have still been working, they would have been vaccinated?
Oh, absolutely. They're all vaccinated and they're up to date, which means they've been boosted.
Okay, so we have a shortage because we have over a hundred people who are vaccinated and boosted and who caught COVID and can no longer work right now.
Yeah, I mean, they're not dread that dreadfully ill.
Oh, no, I know. I just want to make sure I understood you correctly.
Yeah, in the work, they could spread it. So we don't want that to happen. I might add that cloth masks were never thought to be very effective. And if if people want a physics article about how masks work, I have one in a PDF, which we can send out to all the board members. It's it's just a review of how different mask materials work and shows that the three-layer surgical mask, you know, the thing that we wear a lot, is pretty good. Omicron is so contagious that they're recommending the addition of a N ninety-five or K ninety-five, particularly for healthcare workers. So some of the Seattle hospitals have already shifted over. Some people have been wearing K ninety-fives and N ninety-fives all along. The important thing is is these more robust masks don't need to be fit tested. You can just pull one out of a box and put it on. If you're caring for a COVID patient, you need a fit tested one for maximum protection.
I I wasn't aware, though, that we have changed our guidelines in the state for schoolchildren to be required that they wear a mask that's actually in any way effective.
I mean, are you talking about being a hundred percent effective or better than nothing?
How much better would you describe the cloth mask is?
No.
Just to take a stab in the dark. I mean, what do what do you think is the efficacy of a cloth mask to a eight-year-old third grader right now?
I don't think the cloth mask is has any good efficacy. It's not recommended as a way to prevent COVID transmission.
Thank you. I agree. So would my son.
If I may, though, I I understand that part of this article talked about the idea that cloth masks might not might not be enough. In the first paragraph, it talks about the recommendation of pairing a cloth mask with a surgical model or moving to a a more robust surgical or rather respirator, like a KN ninety-five or an N ninety-five.
I noted that too, Director Fresco, and yet we don't have changes. And I thought when the science changed, we were supposed to change along with the science changing. And my child, along with thousands of other children across the state, are sitting in a mask, and they will be tomorrow, wearing a cloth mask and not being able to see the face of their teacher while Omicron surges. And we haven't made any change to our policy.
Well, I I would agree with you. You said earlier about good news. I think the good news is that the Omicron surge is not killing people to the degree that Delta did. And I'm all, will be forever grateful that young people, schoolchildren, young infants have not died in drugs. It's it's very different than past what we would have referred a hundred years ago as a plague. So I'm I'll be forever grateful for that. But I will also share with you that it's not a question of doom and gloom, but we are in a very serious circumstance where if you're pro-business, if you are interested in our economy, we have many people sick, and when you many people out, we have many schoolchildren who are sick. And obviously, parents who are working have to then care for those children. So we are in a crisis in this country because around this entire country, we have people so sick that they can't work, which becomes an issue of supply. It comes an issue in our service industry, certainly economics. So this is a serious circumstance from many different perspectives. Commissioner Anderson, are we ready to move on?
I'm sorry, I've been talking to myself here. Apparently, I was been I've been on mute. If we're, if there's no other comments or questions, let's move on to to letter F. And again, Commissioner McKinney.
This really is in keeping what we've already touched on, which is really the negative impacts of the vaccine mandate across the state. We touched on this before, to the point, we have, we have Governor Inslee having to get out of state workers to help us in our health industry, self-imposed crisis. I don't know about you, the supply chain issue became very real to the people in Washington when we couldn't get the passes plowed. And I will note that even Kittitas County offered to help Wash Dot to 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 get this going. Why? I think they actually, because they were being inundated with people who were literally parking on the sides of the arterial roads, waiting for the the passes to open up. But truly unprecedented and and to not acknowledge, to not even the least acknowledge that in some small way, potentially, the that the vaccine mandate that he imposed has caused negative impacts to our economy, to our services, to our ability to drive and drive safely. The impacts go on and on. And I bring this up because we had just a real in-your-face reality, which I might add, Wash Dot members who were fired or resigned or retired early made very clear this summer that this is exactly what was going to happen. And and here we are. So I would simply say that it was easy to look around and see the negative impacts of this vaccine mandate. And it's unfortunate. But I have little, I have hope, since we're talking about hope, that maybe we can see that reverse. Maybe we can see that if we have people who are being allowed to work vaccinated and COVID positive, then maybe we can bring back the unvaccinated who are willing to be a part of the solution.
All right. Any further comments? Hearing none. Let's move on to G.
I would just add one comment, Commissioner Anderson, that, but yeah, I mean, the impact, the economic impact of shutting down the pass for five and six days like last week had is one that that, I mean, that is measured in billions of dollars. And 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 to to kind of blow that off of like, well, this was unavoidable. It was not unavoidable. This was created because of policy that we are enacting, which is insane. It that it's insane that we're not letting people, you know, I mean, how close to you is somebody else when you're shoveling snow in a in a plow? I would imagine you're alone and and you're you're plowing the road. So I just think that that that, you know, we we can, we can sugarcoat it. We can try and make it look like, oh, these are unrelated events. But the reality of the situation is that those events are directly related to one another. And and unfortunately, the pandemic is taking a toll everywhere. But but it cannot be brushed under the rug that our policies on healthcare, on police, on safety, on firefighters, and on road cleaners is is going to be felt time and time again, while we continue to not allow those to work that would otherwise work had it not been for the vaccine mandates.
Thank you, sir. Any further comment?
I had a little personal perspective, if I may. So my grandson is a truck driver. And over the last two weeks, I can tell he had, he used to work five up to usually up to six days a week. And he was on the road maybe two to three days a week. So that's time off with him, you know, for no pay. He is just one individual, and he's in the process of trying to buy a house. So that makes everything more difficult. The other thing is, they might try to get a chicken at Costco in the last week. There isn't that, none to be had. So, you know, I'm just agreeing, Dr. Atterberry, thank you, and and Commissioner McKinney, thank you, that, you know, we have put into place policies that that greatly impact, you know, not just healthy, health is very important, but also the economic health of our community and business to be able to function as they should.
Thank you. Any further comment? All right, hearing none. We will then move on to G and Mr. Elliott.
Well, considering we're really tight on time, I'll just simply say the Supreme Court today issued two opinions. One, that's relevant to the state of Washington. The other, the healthcare worker decision from the Supreme Court really doesn't apply to us. But as it relates to the one hundred employee vaccine or test mandate, the United States Supreme Court essentially issued a stay, saying that the administrative agency, OSHA, did not have the authority to do what it did. The court there did make one interesting statement, because I do want to raise a caveat for the board and for our community. And its initial line in its concurrence of three justices, they stated, there is no, there is no question that state and local authorities possess considerable power to regulate public health. And it then sort of identified the cases that the Supreme Court has dealt with on this issue. The reason why I bring that up is while OSHA's max mandate or test regulations have been set aside, the ETS, they have been state, so employers are not required to do that. It does open up the possibility from a state standpoint that our governor could still issue that. So in case anybody thinks this is completely done, et cetera, all I want to say is it is possible that from a state authority standpoint, that these mandates could be issued at a statewide level, that nothing in this opinion prevented that. I did have a chance this afternoon to listen to Governor Inslee had a two-thirty or three o'clock press conference. He was asked specifically on this topic whether he has any interest in doing this. And I want to identify his quotes. And I want to identify his quotes. He said and asked, now that the Supreme Court has issued this ruling, will the state do anything to require employers to do this, uh, vaccine mandate or test? He said, not at the moment, thinking about this vaccine requirement for other employers. He said, I, I, I recognize, and the reasons we have not done it before is because of the stress that is caused on our businesses. I am aware of this and recognize it. However, I am not eliminating this from consideration of implementing this in the future. So he at least identified some of the issues you all are discussing related to businesses and lack of employees and the stress they're on. But that was his answer and questions immediately. Now granted, that interview came about two hours after the Supreme Court decision had come out. So in terms of where we're at, as of right now, employers, uh, following the OSHA ETS, there is no requirement on that based on the, uh, Supreme Court's decision today.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I would just say that if you've got three hours and four minutes, it is intriguing and everyone should listen to SCOTUS, uh, as a full, uh, Supreme Court, um, oral arguments, uh, for the 100, uh, employee was fascinating. Uh, and if you've got three hours to split up over a weekend, absolutely, uh, listen to it. Uh, it really, it was amazing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, we will move on. Uh, Commissioner McKinney, we have about two minutes left. Uh, is that ample time to cover all your, uh, item?
Yes, absolutely, because we've already touched on it. And so, uh, there are, of course, um, even states, uh, who have been able to, uh, get this data, uh, which is, you know, what is the difference, uh, for hospitalized with versus due to or because of symptoms? So I'm asking, having acknowledged that we continue to ask you for more data. So thank you, thank you, thank you. But it is important, it does paint the real picture, especially, I might add, when we're talking about children. Uh, because, uh, especially when we're talking about policies that impact, uh, children, I think it is incredibly important for us to know, uh, were the hospitalizations, uh, that are listed because of COVID, is it because a child broke their leg, uh, and was admitted and tested, uh, as a matter of protocol and was found to be COVID positive and asymptomatic? Or is it because they were, uh, exhibiting symptoms that, that their parents really were concerned and felt them to, they needed to get the care that they needed? So I would just ask, uh, us to, um, ask staff to look into how we can, similar to the state of New York, uh, and several other states, uh, get this information specific to our data in Yakima County and start to differentiate, uh, between with COVID versus because of COVID.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, I'll try to make this quick. Um, so this was very similar, uh, was asked back in August, um, was whether or not our hospitals would be able to audit their deaths and hospitalizations for COVID-19 versus, um, any other reason. Um, and if, if you remember correctly, back to that, that meeting, uh, we had overwhelming response from the hospitals at that time, that that was just absolutely unable to, um, really happen. Uh, they were stretched very thin. Talked with the hospitals, had a lot of conversations with the hospitals, not only, uh, in Yakima, but certainly throughout the region, and they are even more strapped than they were back in August. Uh, they really do not have the ability to go back in time and certainly audit everything since COVID has started. But even doing, um, an audit on every new COVID case to look at their admin reason is, uh, a lot of time for the hospital staff to be able to do. They're the only ones who would be able to do it. And they certainly just do not have the time. I think we've talked a lot about our hospital systems being stretched and I think that it's very easy to sit in a meeting like this and say our hospital's stretched. But it's something else to, uh, walk down the ER hallways and have conversations with the CNOs and CMOs of the hospitals, uh, and really get a true appreciation of the situation they're under. Um, so at this time, the hospitals are really just not able to provide us with that information. They continue to, uh, report, um, hospitalizations at, to us as they do to the state since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, so just want to, want to touch on that. I have had conversations and, uh, it's been overwhelming consensus that they're just, they just do not have the time.
Thank you for that, Nathan. Uh, Commissioner Anderson, what I would say is that that is not the answer that as a resident of Yakima County that I'm prepared to accept as the final answer. I think it's actually, uh, it's really discouraging. It's really discouraging to hear that that information, which is so vital to how we set policy and what the public perception is of the depth and breadth of the extent of how this virus impacts our community, that our hospital systems would not place a priority on this data, especially we're at the beginning of the year. My understanding from reading what other states have done is that they're, they are tracking it. They are able to tell what someone was admitted for. And so we don't have enough time apparently to finish this. So I would ask that this be moved and tabled, uh, to the next, uh, meeting so that we can further discuss what, uh, we as a health board might be able to do to further strengthen our request, if that is the decision of the board.
You just don't require a motion?
Yes, I motioned to table until our next meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded to table this, uh, topic until our next meeting, uh, which would be, uh, January 26th, uh, eight, eight thirty. Uh, any further discussion?
All for the question.
Uh, just one, just one question, uh, Commissioner Anderson.
Yes, sir.
The, um, the meetings, uh, the supplemental meetings on Thursdays versus Wednesdays are, are a bit, uh, more challenging for me personally to make it to. Is this a permanent placement for Thursdays versus Wednesdays going forward on the supplemental meeting versus the, uh, the regular business meeting?
Um, somebody refreshed my mind, but I think we changed it from Wednesdays to Thursdays because it was a complication for other board members.
It was Dr. Cleary who requested that we changed to Thursday, but he dropped off an hour ago, so we can't ask him. Maybe we can revisit that.
Yeah, let's revisit that also on, on our next meeting, okay?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Yes, sir. I am.
Um, I move that we adjourn to our next regular meeting on January the 26th.
We need to, we had a call.
We need to take a vote on, on motion. All right, so there's been a motion made to, uh, move this topic, uh, to continue discussion on it, uh, to our next meeting. Uh, uh, Mr. Ryan, are you still available?
I, yes, I am.
Pick a quick poll, please.
All right, uh, to, to move the, this agenda item to the next meeting.
Yes.
Um, vote yes. Dr. Cleary's not here, so Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindy?
Yes.
Councilmember Byers?
Yes.
Councilmember DeVall?
Yes.
Dr. Adderbury?
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Yes. And also, uh, we, let's, let's, uh, add the, uh, discussion for, uh, the day of this, uh, evening meetings. If it's, uh, we need to discuss that further as, as to a Wednesday or Thursday or those, uh, kinds of things. So if you'd, uh, put that on the agenda too, I'd appreciate it. All right, uh, councilperson Byers?
Yes, I will make my motion now. Thank you. Um, so I move that we adjourn to our next regular meeting on January the 26th, eight thirty AM via Zoom.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
All the question.
Question's been called for. All those in favor?
Aye.
Somebody's ready.
Any opposed? If you're opposed, you can stay on as long as you want. But we are, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Vice Chair Byers.
Bye.